Good evening. Good evening. The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board of Trustees are now convened in a boardwork session on Thursday, February 10th, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Service Center located at 10300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas, for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the Monday, February 14th, 2022 regular board meeting agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to engage in day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. Audience members may not participate in the meeting outside the designated agenda items for citizen participation or public comment. Disruption of the meeting by any person, including the audience, is inappropriate and will be addressed by either the Board President or the Board's counsel as the meeting parliamentarian. Continued or repeated disruption of any board meeting by words or actions may result in removal or loss of the privilege to attend the meeting. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on Comcast Channel 16 and the district website. They will also be available as video on demand on the district website following tonight's meeting. For the video to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones, like mine, are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize our community leadership committees who are in attendance this evening. If you would, please stand when I call your name. Grace Hansley for state representative, Dr. Tom Oliverson. There's Grace, thank you. Tana Lamb, thank you. Nancy Frankel, Nancy, and Ryan Irving. He's right there. Thank you for being in attendance. The invocation, pledge of allegiance, vision and mission statement, board comments and citizen participation portions of the agenda will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, February 14th, 2022. We will now proceed with Agenda Items 3A and 3B of the recognitions portion of the agenda. 3A. The Board will recognize Cyfair High School staff members for their prompt recognition of a student cardiac emergency and immediate delivery of life-saving CPR and defibrillation. The presenters, Bevin Gordon and Justin Reed of the Cyfair Fire Department.
Good evening, President Jackson, Dr. Henry, and Board of Trustees. I appreciate this opportunity to recognize a courageous group of Cyfair High School and Cyfair Fire Department employees who saved a student's life. On January 12th, a student's heart stopped in the Cyfair High School gym. Coaches Tad Hamill and Christopher Gestorb immediately recognized the absence of breathing and heartbeat and called for 911 and AED and began to deliver CPR. Moments later, the school nurse, Sherry Johnacek, arrived with an AED. She and the athletic trainer, Christopher Gistor-- or Christopher Graff, applied the electrodes. CPR stopped while the AED analyzed the rhythm of the student's heart and a shock was advised and delivered. Nurse Johnacek and athletic trainer Graff resumed delivering CPR. Officer Roger Muffley was on the scene and took over giving those life-saving breaths. After receiving multiple rounds of CPR and three shocks from the AED, the student regained a heartbeat. Cyfair Fire Department's Chief of Emergency Medical Services, Justin Reed, will describe what he observed when his crew arrived on the scene.
Thank you, Commissioner Gordon, and thank you, Dr. Henry. Thank you, Board of Trustees, for this opportunity. You know, in a season of darkness, it's nice to be able to celebrate life and also to highlight the amazing partnership that we, the Cyfair Fire Department, have with Cyfair ISD. To continue on Commissioner Gordon's story, so we got the call for cardiac arrest, and obviously that sends the cavalry. Included in that response was Lieutenant Cox, Paramedic Bowie, Paramedic Edwards, Captain Hobbs, who responded within five minutes to the call, in addition to a whole fleet of other people. Once we arrived, we had seen that the student was in fact resuscitated, but he was still very sick. Our crew here began assisting his breathing, and they did an advanced assessment of his condition. The plan was formulated for his care, and we took over from the amazing Cyfair ISD staff. While we were en route to the hospital, they began to prepare an advanced procedure to place a breathing tube in the student as our less invasive treatments for managing his airway were not improving. This process has significant risks that are associated with it, and we implement a robust checklist system as we're entering into this process. And during our, what we call a tactical timeout, they noticed that he was starting to have purposeful movement and kind of looked over, and as Paramedic Bowie was telling me earlier, he looked up, he was like, "I had a dream." So they delivered him to the amazing staff at TCH, who continued his care. He was ultimately discharged, and as I was told, he is now back at school. So this celebration of life defines what the American Heart Association calls the chain of survival, and we collectively hit every step in that chain. Kind of funny side note, I went back in to get the information off of the AED, and I came in and I saw the coaches and officers and the nurse, everybody's in there just kind of hooping and hollering and high-fiving, and then they saw me and kind of stopped. And I was like, "No, man, you guys go ahead, you have every right to have that joyful moment," sort of in that darkness, too. And the other side note was when we asked about the students, because in our industry, we're very cognizant of the secondary patient that comes along from, you know, witnessing a traumatic event such as this, and the staff were amazing, and I said, "We'd already executed that plan, and we have the-- they're in with the counselors right now." So it was phenomenal. So amazing job by all, and thank you for the opportunity. My call to action to the audience and those that are listening would be to ask yourself, "Are you as prepared as the Cyfair ISD staff were to respond to something like this?" I could imagine they never thought, sitting in that CPR class, those EAP policy meetings, that they'd ever actually have to implement this, but it can happen to anyone. Thankful for you guys, and thank you for the opportunity.
Will the honorees please come on up? We'd like to recognize Sharon Johnacek, Tad Hamill, Christopher Graff, Christopher Gestorb, Roger Muffley, James Cox, Jessica Bowie, Brian Edwards, and Charles Hobbs. Thank you all so much, and congratulations.
It puts a smile on your face and a song in your heart. I thank everybody involved once again. I'm off script, but please indulge me. This did not happen by accident. Years ago, the district put in what is known as the gold standard. I used to be a member of my alma mater's chancellor council and attending the cardiology session. I came back and asked that question in the board meeting. Where did we stand? And there were three different levels. And the answer that came back is this district was one of the few in the state of Texas to have adopted the gold standard just in case this situation happened. So Mark, all those years of planning and careful thinking, they always pay off. So thank you, sir. And now back to the script. The Board will recognize Cypress Woods High School for being the Texas recipient of the 2021-2022 National Football Foundation's National High School Academic Excellence Award. And the presenter, athletic director, Ray Cepeda.
Well, I'm really so proud to be here tonight. You know, first, for that recognition, what an awesome job by really the entire team to save that young man. And really, we have an update from the original submission on your agenda, and it's a positive update. So Mr. Jackson, Board of Trustees, Dr. Henry, it's really my pleasure to be here tonight representing our athletic department to present the Cywoods football program for special recognition for being selected by the National Football Foundation as their inaugural National High School Academic Excellence Award winner. This award was designed by the foundation to honor the absolute best individual football team in the nation for excellence on and off the field of play. I would also be remiss if I did not point out that Bridgeland and Cy Park were also selected as Texas Class 6A finalists for this award by the Texas High School Coaches Association. We were, along with KDISD, the only school districts that had three finalists for that award. Now, our district athletic program really is built on three pillars of academic excellence, competitive excellence, and service to our community. Cywoods and their football team this year really exemplified these aspirational qualities. Cywoods was chosen as the Texas state champion by the Texas High School Coaches Association and entered the national competition that included 62 teams from 13 states. The Cywoods varsity football team had a 3.9 GPA on a 4.0 scale this year and had an incredible 50 members of their team that was selected for the Academic All-District Team. In addition to that, 15 seniors were awarded Academic All-State Recognition. 51 of the 67 athletes on the varsity roster were named to the Academic Honor Roll at Cywoods High School. Cywoods put together all of these impressive accomplishments while challenging themselves in the classroom. Coach Semper told me that 56 out of the 67 players on the roster were enrolled in AP or advanced level classes. In addition to their strong academic performance, Cywoods excelled on the field of play, qualified for the UIL State Football Playoffs. They also had 12 athletes make the All-District First or Second Team and additional nine members make the Honorable Mention Team. Finally, they excelled in service to their community, participating in volunteer efforts with the Special Olympics, the Houston Food Bake, and they participated in several food and toy drives. National Football Foundation Chairman Archie Manning said the following regarding the Cywoods football team. "The National Football Foundation is proud to present the inaugural NFF National High School Academic Excellence Award to Cywoods High School. All of the school's players, coaches, administrators, and their families should all be incredibly proud of the team's accomplishments. We hope by inspiring teams to compete in the classroom with the same competitive spirit that they take to the win on the field, we will better prepare our high school football players for success later in life." I have to concur with this Hall of Famer that the athletes on the Cywoods football team, head football coach Cody Semper, principal Gary Kenninger, and really his entire staff and community should really be commended for this prestigious award. There will be others in the future that win this award, but Cywoods will always be the first, and for that, CFISD is very proud of you. So tonight, I'd like to recognize Coach Semper, Gary, you and your leadership and your staff on winning this inaugural prestigious award.
Hey Gary, y'all don't run off, because we're gonna have a break here in a minute and know some people want to congratulate y'all. And I have to apologize for going off script again. I think I'm the only surviving board member who was present when I and the other six commented during board session to our superintendent that we really wanted to have increased emphasis upon our athletes and their academic performance. When I told my running mate Christine Hartley they were just supposed to win games, she hit me on the shoulder and said, "Stupid, no, they're students, too." But our superintendent heard us, he made it happen. He brought Ray Cepeda in, and that was one of Ray's charges. And Ray Cepeda, athletic director, thank you for making this happen. I know the coaches are the ones who had to do the work, and the students are the ones who had to perform, but none of this happens without quality leadership. So please accept my forbearance for moving off the script, but I thought it was necessary to also make a couple of extra thank yous. Back to the script. Agenda Items 3C and 3D under recognitions will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, February 14th, 2022. Prior to proceeding with the rest of the agenda, the Board will rearrange the order of the items on tonight's agenda and move Item 7A to our first item. We will adjourn to closed session to discuss 7A as posted. Before adjourning to closed session, I would like to ask Leslie Francis if we have any public comments pertaining to Agenda Item 7A. We do not. The remaining public comments will be heard after the Board reconvenes an open session. May I have a motion to move into closed session, please?
Mr. President, I move that the Board move into closed session at this time.
Thank you. Since this is coming from the Board itself as a committee, do I need a second, morning? A second, please. Motion's been made and seconded. We will adjourn for closed session. May I have a motion to move to reconvene an open session?
Mr. President, I move that we reconvene an open session.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? We are reconvened. And technology, when you can, please restore Ms. Debbie Blackshear to the meeting. Thank you, sir. 4A, public comments. Patrons who have duly registered per policy BED local may address the Board and make public comments on an agenda item during or before the Board's consideration of the item. The Board may also allow public comments on agenda items at all meetings. The Board will continue with the remaining agenda after the registered patrons have had an opportunity to speak. I have the public comment request forms in front of me. Our first speaker is Dr. Tara Cummins. Before you start, Mr. Secretary, are you prepared? He's ready. Please begin when you're ready.
Okay. I'm a licensed psychologist and licensed specialist in school psychology. My son is a sophomore at Woods, and they've suffered multiple traumatic losses related to mental health in the last year. We're in the midst of a humanitarian crisis secondary to the pandemic. It's ongoing, and mental health as a predictor, moderator, and outcome is baked in. I commend the district for prioritizing mental health as a safety measure specifically in the form of our mental health intervention team. I want to express my deep gratitude during this National School Counseling Week to our counselors and also to our psychologists, substance use counselor, and youth service specialists. Your work saves lives and is crucial for student safety and success. Our students are struggling. We've talked about academic struggles and COVID learning loss. We've talked about behavioral struggles and holding students accountable. We've heard about literacy and going back to the basics of reading, writing, and arithmetic. Three of our trustees campaigned in part on blatant disinformation regarding social emotional learning, or SEL, which is part and parcel of the necessary work of our mental health interventionists. SEL paves the way for safe, vibrant campuses full of all-around well students who are prepared to be productive citizens post-graduation. If those trustees think that the district can rebound from COVID learning loss, can increase literacy or other academic markers, can address behavioral issues, can keep our students safe, without SEL, they are sorely, dangerously mistaken. Finally, let us follow the lead of our young people. The students at Woods have organized Walk for a Tomorrow, a candlelight walk for suicide prevention and mental health in our community. Here are these kiddos who've suffered traumatic losses, many of whom are undoubtedly struggling with their own mental health concerns, who are stepping up for themselves, each other, and their community. I'm so proud of them and humbled by them. I hope to see you all at the walk on February 28th at 6:00 PM at Cywoods football field. We belong, after all, to each other. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Christina Woods.
Good evening, Mr. Jackson, Dr. Henry, and trustees. I wanted to speak in connection to the Agenda Item 8B, the Safety and Security Action Plan. I wanted to start around comments that were made with regards to discipline in the district in connection to the equity audit by one of our board members last month. We know that discipline disproportionately affects black students, yet this board member seems to have successfully started a conversation among trustees at the meetings that came across as an attempt to distract from the audit, to detract from the audit's results in this area, or to conflate the disciplinary findings in the audit with his concerns about disciplinary protocols and procedures in the classroom, or all three. Tonight, I wanted to bring our attention back to the findings of the disproportionate disciplinary actions taken against black students in the district. The data on this finding didn't begin at CFISD. It is a universal consequence of being black in public schools nationwide. Any attempt to divert attention away from this is not in alignment with the district that wants to be upheld as anti-racist and is willing to do everything it can to provide a safe, equitable learning environment for all students. Any interest in remedying disciplinary protocols should not be undertaken until the district takes steps to remedy the fact that 40% of black students account for all suspensions, while black students only--
Ma'am, can you remind me of your agenda item, please?
The Safety and Security Plan.
Okay, I'm gonna need you to focus your comments on the Safety and Security Plan, please.
Doing my best.
Not really. So can you focus on what's in the Safety and Security Plan and not last month's equity audit?
What's in the Safety and Security Plan are mental health supports and behavioral supports and the other kinds of things that help to support kids who are dealing with discipline problems in the classroom. But I think we also need to recognize that when we're talking about a disproportionate amount of students being disciplined in the classroom, it is bigger than how we manage their behavior. It is what is the district doing wrong? What are the biases that children are facing in the classroom and in the district that cause them to be in a position where they can be disciplined disproportionately?
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Julie DeHaan.
Good evening again, gentlemen and ladies. I wanted to speak with you briefly on two things on Agenda Item B, Safety and Security Action Plan. Number one, the Board made statements that they would work toward more transparency. My concerns in those appearance I've spoken with are, why is there only an oral report that was going to be presented tonight on Safety and Security Action Plan? I was unable to find details of this plan on the website, and no document was attached for the public to review. Incidents are occurring in parents have no idea what they are, how they may make their child aware of the circumstances to protect themselves, or parents to take proactive measures and partner with the school. Some that I have become aware of by parents are, a child knocked unconscious on a bus and a restraining order filed against the parent when they wanted to discuss it with the district. A child was choked, severely beaten, and assaulted inside a supervised classroom according to Channel 2 News. The child required hospitalization and major medical work, 30 stitches for a partially detached lip, and much more. A child bullied and assaulted and not allowed to move, transferred to another school. A child trafficked out of one of our schools, kidnapped and raped for 10 days. A report of a student having unwanted sex on campus resulting in an assault and continued harassment. Parental concerns that a counselor may have offered options for obtaining abortion pills. Dreaming for child trafficking taking place and an active assault charge against a current CLC member who is repeatedly acknowledged and honored by this school board. What kind of notification and report is being provided to let parents know of these incidents on a repetitive basis? We need written reports and notifications. And the last is, this board, it's school board and administration is not operating in good faith regarding records requests. There are discriminatory practices in the records requests being completed timely, responded to, and excessive costs associated with them.
Ma'am, this doesn't, ma'am, your comments have to be related to the agenda item.
It was related to the Safety and Security Plan, and all of the items on number one was on safety.
Talking about public information requests is not part of the--
That was on regards to some of these requests for safety.
Thank you, thank you.
That was one of the ORRs. Thank you, morning.
Thank you.
As you know, Agenda Item 7A, under the discussion portion of the agenda, was discussed in closed session at the beginning of the meeting. Agenda Item 7B, under discussion, will be discussed in closed session at the regular board meeting on Monday, February 14th, 2022. We will now move on to the reports portion of the agenda. Eight reports. 8A. The administration will provide an oral report on the status of the 2014 and the 2019 board bond program. Presenters, Matt Morgan, Paula Ross, Karen Smith, Dr. Linda Macias, Todd Sepulpa-- I didn't say that right. My tongue gets tired. Go ahead, Matt.
President Jackson, Dr. Henry, members of the Board, thank you for the opportunity to present on the 2014-2019 bond referendums. Before I get started, I believe we have some members of the Long Range Planning Committee in the office, in the audience? My tongue's tied, too. If you don't mind, will you please stand to be recognized? We sincerely appreciate all the efforts you put in. So, in May of 2014, the 2014 bond was passed for $1.2 billion. In May of 2019, we passed another bond for $1.762 billion. 2014 bond had six phases. We've completed five phases and almost complete with the sixth phase. We should complete the sixth phase in 2023. Six phase, the sixth phase included renovations in Elementary School 57 and Elementary School 58. All the renovations from this phase have been complete. The contract for Elementary 57 was awarded at the April 21 board meeting. This school will open in 2022-2023, and is located in the Bridgeland Master Plan Community, next in the Parkland Village section, off Tuckerton and West Road. This is current construction photos. You can see waterproofing going up. We have masonry going up, and we're starting to work on the inside. So, we're really excited about this facility. IBI was the architect, and ICI is the general contractor on this project. Elementary 58 is scheduled to open in 2023-2024, and is located at Clay Road and Fry Road. PBK was the architect on this project, and ICI contractors are the construct, are the general contractors on this project. We're not quite as far along on 58, but substantial completion is scheduled for April 2023. We are getting out of the mud and starting to lay slab, so we're making good progress on this. The 2014, part of the 2014 bond in Phase 6, we did hold back. We had a lot of campuses, or these campuses that were listed, we were in design and about to go out to bid for these, and then we were also working on the 19 bond. And when we started looking at the design of these schools and what we were going to include in the 19 bond, it became very apparent that if we went forward with this work in Phase 6, when we passed the 2019 bond, we would be tearing that out, and just almost a waste of tax dollar money. So, we, when the 19 bond was passed, we combined the $2,014 with the $2,019, and did more significant renovations at these campuses. This included, the 2014-19 scope included segmentation or for open concept classrooms, or security for open concept classrooms, classroom additions, additional car readers on exterior doors, additional impact resistant glass, classroom phones, security fencing, and furniture replacements. Our communications team helped us put together a short video where we interviewed some of the principals that just experienced these renovations to get their input on the, or on the, I am tongue-tied, Mr. Jackson, to get their input on the impact this had on the educational environment. It's been a rough winter, Dr. Henry. It worked, it used to work.
So, we love our new school.
We did significant renovations at 16 elementary schools. The renovations at these campuses included classroom expansions, cafeterias, and kitchens in some of the facilities, as well as the 2019 bond safety and security component, which includes security for open concept classrooms, additional lockdown buttons, additional impact resistant glass, classroom telephones, intruder lock sets, and security fencing.
By adding in the different measures that we have, we've created levels or steps of security in order to provide safety, yet keep an environment that the students can thrive in.
I think the biggest impact is with the segmentation in the walls. It's lessened classroom noise, the hallway noise of students traveling is not impacting classrooms.
So, they're segmented with floor-to-ceiling walls and taller cabinets. It's night and day when you walk through the areas. The acoustics, you can get that great buzz of learning in the classroom, but it's not noisy.
It has totally increased and changed our whole mood, the culture of our campus, the climate of our campus. Things are bright, the environment is bright. The lighting in itself has made our campus so beautiful, and has widened our space so much. I think that it has helped us all to feel like we're not crammed into the learning environment.
Everything feels fresh and new. Not only are the classrooms larger, to that brand-new furniture. So, all of our new furniture provides flexible seating in every classroom for all ages, allowing students to maximize their learning styles and have different choice within the classroom and in their day.
When you walk through the areas, all the classrooms are so different now because you have this multitude of ways that you can arrange the seating. And then all this flexible seating, of course, the kids love it because some kids just need that extra movement, and they need to wobble on that stool the whole time, but they're reading and engaged.
We have a brand-new cafeteria that has been completely updated, and there's much more space for our amazing cafeteria workers, and there's actually additional serving lines. So, the efficiency in our cafeteria is much greater. There's been a huge impact on our learning environment.
Our facilities department completed the renovations of 29 campuses this past summer, a contract value of about $340 million. These renovations were made possible by the CFISD community when the 2019 bond was approved. We are truly fortunate to have a community that continues to invest in updating our facilities and campuses.
We were really pleased with the way the segmentation projects came out this summer, and wanted you to see what the principals thought about the impact on the educational environment. And you want to see it again? Help me, Jill. Oh, thank you. We also included Blile Middle School in this, in these group of schools with 2014-19 bond scope. At Blile Middle School, we completed this August of 2021 as well. We renovated the instructional and office areas, did a thousand-square-foot addition to the orchestra rooms, renovated PE and locker room areas, installed new tracks and a press box, and did a complete furniture replacement. Camp Middle School was also completed in August of 2021, and we did similar scope there with the renovation of the instructional and office areas, thousand-square-foot addition to the orchestra rooms, renovated PE and locker rooms, new tracks, a press box, and furniture replacement. Searge's Middle School was also a combined 14-19 scope, not as quite as much scope at this school, but we did add a thousand-square-foot orchestra room, athletic storage, installed the safety and security features, and they got a furniture replacement as well. In May of 2019, we brought to the board a package for district-wide security fencing to expedite security fencing at schools in Phases 3 through 7, because we knew we wouldn't get to those for quite a while. Currently, we've installed fencing at 17 elementary campuses. We have 23 that are currently being installed, and those will be finished by hopefully July of this year. And then the last phase is going to, are going to be high school and middle school portable security fencing. We have run into some steel issues and supply chain issues, which has kind of slowed this down, but we're kind of, we're getting back on track. So, the 2019 bond project phasing has seven phases. We've completed Phase 1, well into Phase 2, and we're bringing contracts to the board to approve for Phase 3. Phase 7 will not be completed until 2027. So, for Phase 1, we included renovations, baseball, softball field renovations, high school band tower replacements, the exhibit center and science resource center renovation, furniture replacements, and propane, propane, Dr., or Tom, you have rubbed off on me. I am totally tongue-tied. Propane tanks for transportation. We've completed all the renovations with the exception of Franco and Elementary, which will be completed in the summer of 2022. In January of 2021, we completed the baseball and softball renovations at Si Falls, Si Ranch, Si Ridge, and Si Woods. By August of 2021, we had installed high school band towers at all campuses except Cyfair High School, which will see, will receive their band towers when we do the Cyfair Master Complex. These are, towers are 40 feet tall, four separate viewing levels, a canopy on the top level. They have an enclosed, an internal stairway to each level, and each tower is supplied with power and data. I don't know if you were ever up on one of the old band towers. I think Dr. Henry was. So, you were. These are much safer. These are some of the best band towers that we can spec. The exhibit center project was completed in January of 2022. It's included approximately a 9,000-square-foot addition, which increased the arena seating capacity from 398 to 1,096. We also renovated the restrooms and created dressing room stations, a new chiller, fire sprinkler, and video presentation boards. As, after comments we received at the DD presentation we presented to the board before this, when we brought this project forward, we went ahead and took the board's request and added 40 additional pins. And those pins, we weren't able to have them ready for the livestock show, but they'll be ready in March. Now, I don't know if you were at the livestock show last weekend, but it turned out, the project turned out very well. A lot of compliments on that, on that. VLK was the architect on this project, and ICI was the contractor. The installation of 18,000-gallon propane, propane tanks was completed in January of '22. For Phase 2, we included renovations, baseball, softball renovations, the new administration building, the Visual and Performing Arts Center, new transportation center, Brodigan Center CTE addition, and Middle School 20. We've completed all of the renovations with the exception of the Food Production Center, which will be completed in August of 2023. Baseball, softball field renovations include turf, fencing, batting cages, bullpens, dugouts, and storage buildings. We completed Jersey Village, Langham Creek, Si Creek, and Si Lakes. They all turned out really well. The contract for the Visual and Performing Arts Center and the Dr. Mark Henry Administration Building was awarded in April of 2021. These facilities are located on 290 and Old Matskee Road. The Visual and Performing Arts Center will house 1,500 spectators. It has an auditorium with two balconies for a more intimate viewing experience, a small theater, a dance room, visual arts room, and lobby, and a lobby with areas to display student art. This project is scheduled to be completed in December of 2022. The Dr. Mark Henry Administration Building is right next to the Visual and Performing Arts Center. This building is approximately 225,000 square feet, and includes the administration offices, a boardroom, digital cinema studio, and a conference center. We did three packages at this site, and I don't know if you remember this site before we started construction. It was a driving range and a bunch of woods. So, I want to show you a little video. This is a timelapse video. As you can see, we're making a lot of progress at this site. We're really excited about these two new facilities. And I'm really excited to see when it's finished. The timelapse video, that should be pretty impressive. Our new transportation center, Transportation Number 6, contract was awarded in September of 2021. This transportation center will be located at the corner of Jarvis and Woodspilane Boulevard. It will accommodate 200 buses, and will also include a two-story district training center. This facility is scheduled to open December of 2022. This is the site plan. We have covered bus parking, service bays, an administration area, training center, and a fueling station. This is a recent aerial shot of the construction. We did two packages on this, too. We did a civil package, a site package, to do the detention. We've completed that package, and as you can see, we're starting the paving. The contract for the CTE addition at the Brodigan Center was awarded in May of 2021 and is scheduled to be completed by July of 2022. This is a 12,000-square-foot addition to the existing CTE building, including labs, shop space, along with outdoor space for projects and demonstrations. We are making good progress on this project. We've got steel erected, and we're starting to do painting. That's the new bus loop that is going to, so the buses can arrive at the new addition. Middle School 20 contract was awarded in May of 2021 and is scheduled to open 2023-2024 school year. This facility is located in Bridgeland, next to Bridgeland High School and Wells Elementary, and this will complete the Educational Village site in Bridgeland. PBK is the architect on this project, and Satterfield and Ponticus is the general contractor. We are making good progress on this project as well. You can see steel being erected next to Wells Elementary, where the cafeterias will join. We've also, there's an aerial showing where we've got building pad laid down, so we're confident this project will be on schedule.
Hey, Matt, just one correction. I think IBI is the architect on that.
Did I say PBK?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Andy. IBI is the architect on this project. PBK had nothing to do with it. Feel free to correct me, Andy. 2019 Phase 3 includes renovations, baseball, softball renovations, and a Ben Bradley Center expansion. We finished the design on most of the Phase 3 projects. We've already awarded Hope, Moore, Hoover at the January 22 board meeting. Andre and Walker were also awarded at that board meeting. Emery and Hemingway, Farnie, Mcfee, and Swinkie will be awarded tonight, hopefully, for complete construction in 2022 for Emery and Hemingway, and complete construction in 2023 for Farnie, Mcfee, and Swinkie. We'll be bringing the rest of Phase 3 hopefully to the March board meeting, and the Ben Bradley addition is scheduled to bid in April with a completion date of June 2023.
Might let them know what Ben Bradley is.
Ben Bradley is our police station. So, we want to take care of our police officers. Phase 4 includes renovations. Elementary 59, Elementary 59 is scheduled to open the school year of 2024-2025. It is located in Mira Mesa, off of West Road. Cyfair multi-campus renovation, which includes Lampkin, Arnold, and Cyfair, will be completed in 2026. It also includes the reorientation of the athletic fields, the baseball and softball addition, and additional tennis courts.
And, and- Matt?
Yes, sir.
Doesn't that include some flood mitigation also?
Thank you. You beat Tom, you beat Mr. Jackson to the question. It does include flood mitigation. We purchased a parcel of land north of that site to assist with mitigation because that site has flooded. It was close to a flood plain, so we have addressed the mitigation issues. Thank you, Dr. Henry.
I'm sorry.
You've been paying attention in board meetings. Phase 6 of the 2019 bond includes renovations and support service storage. The renovations, the renovations are scheduled to be complete in August of 2026, and the support service storage is scheduled to be complete December of 2024. Phase 7 of the 2019 bond are all renovations, and these renovations are scheduled to be complete in 2027. Before, wait, before I relinquish the podium, I would like to thank a group of people. It's been a tough year with COVID, with supply chain issues, with the freeze, so many obstacles, but I have such a wonderful facilities team and maintenance and operations team. So, I'd like to recognize Dan Gross, he's here, the Director of Construction, Director of Design. He has spent, I don't know how many hours, behind a computer on Zoom, because all of these projects in the 2019 bond, we all started in design right when COVID hit. It's all been Zoom meetings. He has spent countless hours and done such a fantastic job. Shannon Thompson, who's the Director of Technical Services, Jesse Claiborne, Director of Field Construction, Jody Double, Director of Project Managers, and all the project managers and project coordinators. I'd also like to thank Tammy Blankenship, our Director of Operations, and Archie Hayes, our Director of Maintenance. Without this core team, none of this would be possible, and what they did this summer was just almost a small miracle. We have some great architecture partners, Huckabee, Joyner, NATEX, Page, PBK, IBI, and VLK, and we really appreciate their support. We also have some great general contractors. And if you think about last summer, we lost a week because the calendar, school calendar was pushed back, but we completed 19 major renovations and 10 smaller renovations, and all the campuses were ready when the kids came back. So, Division 1 Construction, ICI Construction, Linian Project Solutions, Prime Contractors, and Satterfield and Ponticus Construction Company are all excellent partners to the district. So, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Questions from the board. I'll look in the right. Scott? Oh, well, please continue.
I'm not Paula Ross, and I can't say propane. Sorry, Matt. Good evening. Good evening. Joe, can you help me with the slide? Thank you. you. As part of the two thousand nineteen bond package, our bond committee and ultimately our community approved a twelve-year school bus replacement cycle with the purchase of over four hundred, four hundred new school buses. Our anticipated completion date was September twenty twenty-one. I do have an update. It shows that we're at eighty-nine percent complete. We do have all of the four hundred and fourteen buses that we ordered to get to our twelve-year replacement cycle. We do have all of those in. Currently, we're trying to get those make-ready. Our technicians are driving every morning and every afternoon, so we're a little delayed on getting those buses out, but as we prepare them, we're getting them out onesy-twosy at a time. Just as we said we would hope we would, but they are getting out on the road. With the sun setting of their GPS software, the V three was sunsetting, the GPS hardware was sunsetting, so we had to upgrade to the V four. And as you can see, we have already completed that project at one hundred percent ahead of schedule. It was scheduled for August twenty twenty-two, and we've already completed that upgrade. Our goal to have all of our route buses equipped with our three-point lap shoulder safety belts. That was a law that passed in two thousand seventeen legislative session. We are at eighty-three percent completion with an anticipated completion date with having all of our route buses with the three-point lap shoulder belts by August of twenty twenty-four. Next slide. Oh, yes, next slide. Additionally, the two thousand nineteen bond package included the purchase of eighty-four new police vehicles. As you can see, phase one is complete. There were no vehicles to be replaced in phase two. The thirty-one vehicles that you see in phase three and the thirteen in phase four, our buyers are currently struggling to find vehicles to purchase. Everybody's trying to find vehicles right now, whether it's personal vehicles, but police vehicles are extremely hard to find at this time, but we're still struggling, and we might get onesy-twosy of those in occasionally as well. We have ordered these vehicles, but again, the, the dealers are unable, unable to provide us a firm delivery date. Thank you.
And I apologize, but if you aren't on my script, I don't read it.
No problem.
So, before I ask for questions, is there anybody else on eight A who's not on my script?
Sorry. So, no, isn't, isn't chief up next?
No.
Okay. So, the next area is instructional technology, and Todd Sapulvita is our new director for instructional technology, and so he will be providing the update for us.
Good evening. Such an honor to be up here, and I gotta just say, replacing Becky Cook is such an honor. So, I am going to be presenting tonight on the instructional technology piece of the two thousand nineteen board, bond. So, the bond two thousand nineteen is fifty-three percent complete. We have completed phase one of the one-to-one project, putting a Chromebook in the hands of every C F I S D student. We are currently in phase two of the one-to-one project, replacing Chromebooks that will A U E or automatic update expire by June twenty twenty-two. These would include some of the forty thousand Chromebooks that were already in the district prior to the one-to-one program. Bond funds have purchased seventy-nine thousand five hundred Chromebooks for students. Currently, lights, the light-speed sound systems are being replaced at the elementary school levels. Eighteen elementary campuses have been completed as of February seventh, twenty twenty-two. The refresh will continue till April twenty twenty-five. Prometheus panels are currently going through the replacement cycle, beginning with elementary English Language Arts campuses and portable buildings, and then we'll move to secondary English Language Arts. Of course, like others have said, supply chain disruptions have slowed the replacements of teacher laptops. So, all teacher laptops have been replaced at one elementary, and laptops are provided for newly hired teachers and also when laptops are broken or need repair. Let me go ahead and move to the next slide. Joel, you're a good man. You're a good man. So, the total two thousand nineteen instructional technology bond package was a hundred and forty-nine million, seven hundred and four thousand and eleven dollars. As of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, our expenditures are seventy-nine million, two hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty, and thirty-three cents. That's been spent or encumbered, leaving a balance of seventy million, four hundred and ninety-two dollars, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, eighty dollars and sixty-seven cents. And like I mentioned before, fifty-three percent of the two thousand nineteen instructional technology bond package has been spent to date. I'd like to invite Paula Ross.
Thank you, Todd. Good evening. This evening, Technology Services is reporting on bond two thousand nineteen activity that has transpired over the course of the past year. The first item that I would like to highlight is Extra Hop. Extra Hop is a network detection and response tool. This tool helps our team to understand and secure our network environment by analyzing all internal traffic in real time and leveraging machine learning to identify threats and network anomalies. Last year, we provided an update on Extra Hop with the focus on our east-west traffic between our two primary data centers. Over the course of the past year, we've continued to expand the tool's functionality with enhanced internal traffic visibility, additional logging, retention of network activity, and review of just general traffic, network traffic data. The Extra Hop alerts and information allow us to quickly and efficiently respond to cyber threats and internal anomalies that exist on our network. The second line item pertains to our backup infrastructure, Air Gap. Air Gap refers to computers or networks that are not connected directly to the Internet or other computers. The goal is to ensure that our system backups are physically isolated from our network or Internet activity. In the event that our network is compromised, our backup data is protected. Last year, we reported that the installation of this technology was in progress. This evening, we are reporting that we are currently seventy-five percent complete with backing, backing up our infrastructure. We're in the process of replicating district data shares, electronic data documents, and facilities drawings, and it takes time to replicate this type of data. Next on the list is our wireless network. We have a wireless environment that will support the simultaneous connection of over half a million devices. In order to support that connectivity, we have over twelve thousand wireless access points distributed throughout the district. With such a large wireless network ecosystem, we have approached our wireless upgrade in three phases. Phase one was our backend controller upgrade. We reported this update last February in the bond update. Tonight, I'm reporting on phase two, which is our Clear Pass upgrade. Phase three, very soon, we will be seeking the board's approval for the replacement of our twelve thousand wireless access points with newer, more secure access points. Tonight's update addresses phase two, Clear Pass. Clear Pass provides the ability to apply consistent policies and more granular security controls to both our wired and wireless networks. Clear Pass is part of the H P E Aruba Secure Fabric that, that provides role-based, secure network access for the Internet of Things, I O T, Bring Your Own Technology, B Y O T, district devices, contractors, and internal users. The team has completed the Clear Pass upgrade and is conducting a pilot of the enhanced security policies at two of our campuses before we deploy these policies district-wide. Next on the list is the uninterruptible power supply, the U P S project. All campuses and district locations have a specified number of network closets that provide connectivity from that location back to one of our data centers, where a user then obtains access to a variety of applications and/or the Internet. In the event that a campus should experience a momentary, momentary power failure, each of our five hundred network closets have a newly installed U P S unit. With a power glitch, the goal is for the U P S unit to provide a window, a backup, a battery backup that will keep the network switches online until the power is restored. This minimizes the hard down of our network closets, thereby reducing hardware failures and also maintaining connectivity for our users. Last February, we reported that we were ninety percent complete, and tonight, I would like to report that we're a hundred percent complete. The last item on this slide is a phones in the classroom. Safety and security is a primary focus with bond two thousand nineteen. As campus renovations are being conducted, our team worked very closely with the facilities department to accomplish this goal. In February twenty twenty-one, we reported that this project would be, was thirty-two percent complete. I'm excited to report tonight that as of this past December, this project is now one hundred percent complete. Virtualized server hardware. With the warranty of the compute infrastructure for our virtualization expiring, the blade chassis that was installed in twenty fifteen was replaced with newer hardware. Upgrading to the newer hardware ends up saving the district money for the following reasons. Reduced amount of hardware is needed, less rack space in the data center, less power consumption and more energy efficiency, simpler management, and easier expansion paths. Not only did the overall footprint of servers in the data center decrease, the total amount of computing power was increased when replacing and upgrading to the newest hardware. The next item is our virtualized server software, Carbon Black Managed Detection and Response. Microsoft Windows Defender was previously a baseline level of protection for both servers and mobile endpoints. Servers are now protected from malware through VMware's Carbon Black, Carbon, Carbon Black Cloud Managed Detection and Response suite of products. This type of system provides advanced cybersecurity protection that is driven by behavioral analytics in a single, easy-to-use console that simplifies deployment, monitoring, alerts, and response. Next is our storage platform. With the expiration also of warranty and hardware support in our storage, our Isalon storage area was refreshed with new hardware and increased capacity at both data centers. The refresh increased the storage capacity to almost two petabytes for files and shares that is also configured for disaster recovery. In addition, our Air Gap strategy referenced earlier has been implemented here to protect these business-critical file systems. Data center upgrades. I would like to provide our newest board members with a baseline point of reference for our data centers. We often reference two primary data centers. In bond twenty fourteen, we were able to expand that. Our, we have a local data center that is on-premise here. It's our I S C data center. It's our original data center, and we were able to expand with our bond twenty fourteen to Cyrus One, which is a colocation facility, and that, that is actually our primary data center. As with any technology environment, there is always a risk of downtime. However, by providing two active, active data centers, we built a network support infrastructure that provides geographic diversity and high availability, high availability, thereby minimizing the impact of downtime to our students and staff. In order to maintain a sustainable operational network, keeping up and adopting the latest technologies for data, data, for a data center is necessary. The first data center upgrade I'd like to mention is a form of protection that resides on our network in front of our servers. This is our F five load balancer environment. The purpose of a load balancer is to ensure the seamless failover if, when a server is down or overloaded. A second data center that I, upgrade that I would like to, that's worth noting, is the replacement of our data center network switches and our fiber channel switches. Both of these switch upgrades provide improvements in speed and capacity. Lastly, the demilitarized, this is easy for me to say, lastly, the demilitarized zone or the D M Z has been upgraded to a virtual environment. Previously, we had the D M Z on one side of our network with dedicated hardware. This has, since this has been virtualized, this provides an extra layer of security, and we're able to fail over to the other data, data center if need be. Let's see. Thank you. Next, endpoint protection. As part of our VMware Carbon Black Managed Detection and Response system mentioned earlier, the suite of products we also had included in that suite is our mobile protection for endpoints. This solution provides advanced cybersecurity driven by behavioral analytics and simplifies the deployment and monitoring and alert response. Next is our mobile device management. In addition to desktops, laptops, and Chromebook devices, our endpoint team also supports over seventy-eight hundred iPads, Mac OS devices, and Android devices. These devices are used in a variety of specialty environments, such as communication devices for students with special needs, like the visually impaired. These devices are also used for special projects, such as our COVID testing sites. With the M D M system, this provides our team with the ability to centrally manage devices with functionality, such as the ability to deliver applications and our books to these devices, the ability to control features and apply restrictions, and for our Apple devices, this provides the ability to track our devices in the event that they're stolen. Electronic document management system. The district has been a customer of Laserfish, and Laserfish is a software solution that provide, that offers content management, business process automation, workflow management, and records management. With the impending move to the new administration building, one of our goals is to go paperless or reduce the amount of paper being stored at the new facility. Instead of simply scanning these existing documents to our legacy system, we decided to take a more holistic approach to the management of electronic documents. First, we conducted a needs assessment. So, with the results of the needs assessment, we could have a better idea of the number of documents needed to be, needed to be scanned and also discover efficiencies that could be implemented with business workflow processes. Secondly, an R F P was released and awarded last fall. We released this R F P to verify that we would find the best solution for a document management system. Currently, this project is in a scanning phase with future plans to implement, implement automated business workflow processes. Lastly, we have the police department. With bond two thousand nineteen funding, we've been able to support our police department with the delivery of a new dispatch system. In the support of this new system, we've also been able to expand the infrastructure needed to support a system such as this with additional firewall protection and general network support. So, at this time, I would like to thank the back row back here of Karen Fuller, Charles Franklin, Jennifer Miller, Michael Sasson, and James Costello. Without these team members plus countless others, we could not have gotten through all of these projects over the course of the last year. So, this concludes technologies portion, and I'd like to turn the mic over to Karen Smith.
Thank you, Paula. This slide just shows you the remaining, well, number one, what was authorized, the one point seven six two billion in the two thousand nineteen bond election, and the unissued bonds to date are nine hundred and forty-five million. And we, on the next slide, I wanted to go over the items influencing the interest in seeking tax rate or the debt service tax rate. First of all, it would be the amount of the bond authorization, and this is the amount that the voters approved whenever they approved the bond. Also, property value changes, and this would be whether it be a property value increase or a property value decrease. And for the new board members, what we looked at, we had a range of about five to eight percent over a seven-year period. It would go up, and then it would come back down. And at this point, we've been very lucky. They've been real close to where, what we thought they would be. COVID did not affect our property values, and actually, it helped them. And so, we've even done better than that. Tax collection rates, also the interest rates. This is the interest rate that we borrow the bonds at, and our tax rate assumptions. What we do is we look at tax rate assumptions whenever we were preparing for the sale of the bonds and coming up with the maximum impact to the tax rate. And our assumption was about a four and a half percent fixed rate. This was pretty close to kind of what has been happened, what was happening, and we're really conservative whenever we look at things, and we've been very fortunate. The market's been good, and our actual fixed rate has ranged between two point seven nine and one point nine seven, a low of one point nine seven. So, we've been real pleased with that. Also, the underlying bond ratings, and what those are is the rating that we would have gotten if we did not have the permanent school fund guarantee. And the permanent school fund guarantee is something really unique that the state of Texas offers, and basically, it is like insurance if districts default on their bonds. So, what it allows us to do is sell our bonds with a triple A rating, which is the highest rating possible. Our underlying bond rating is a double A, which is a very good. Our underlying bond rating is a AA, which is a very good rating. And it makes a real difference in that interest rate that we can get with bonds, and it impacts that. Then the bond structure, whether we're going to sell fixed-rate bonds or variable-rate bonds, or maybe we're going to have a refunding associated with that. And as far as bond refundings, what we do is we look at it with our financial advisor. We are looking at bonds that are going to be callable in the near future and determining the best time in the market to maybe possibly do a refund. And the district to date, we've been very fortunate once again with that, and we have refunded bonds for about its tax savings of about $41 million, net present value savings recently. And then any state funding that we might get to help us with debt service payments. What that is for the new board members, it's something called the existing debt allotment. The district does not get that. It's primarily because as your increase in enrollment kind of goes down, but it affects whether you're going to be able to get that existing debt allotment. So our enrollment goes up maybe in a normal year about 1%, but that's what has affected us getting the existing debt allotment. And then the bond maturities associated with the different items that we might be doing. For example, facilities, we would pay back the bonds over 25 years. However, instructional technology, it's over five years. So that affects it. And then the bond sale amounts, what we do is we try to structure it so that we have the least impact to the tax rate. For example, we would never want to take all that the voters approved and sell it all in the first year because it would be such an impact. And then the optional homestead exemption, because basically this optional homestead exemption the district offers of 20%, which is a wonderful benefit to our taxpayers, actually reduces our taxable value when property taxes are applied. Also, it's important for you to know that the interest in sinking tax rate must be set at a rate where we make sure we cover all of our next year's debt service payments that are needing to be made for our borrowing. Next slide. In the 2014 bond authorization, we told the voters that we expected a maximum increase of 4.5 cents. And you may recall that we actually went down a penny, and this was never realized. And then with the 2019 bond authorization, we estimated the maximum would be about three pennies. And to date, basically, although we have increased the interest in sinking tax rate in 21, 22 by one penny, we actually went down on the total tax rate by a penny, 1.63 cents. So it's actually decreased in total. And so this just kind of shows you what the maximum impact, if we realized all three pennies would be on a $200,000 home, and it would be about $40.50 on a $200,000 home. But as you'll note, anybody 65 or older that qualifies for the over-65 exemption, they would not see an increase in their property taxes. Next slide. And this is just a history to remind you of our property tax rates. And as you will see, since the 2019 bond authorization was approved by the voters, the tax rate has actually decreased the total tax rate. And the current year tax rate is at 1.3392. And I believe that is it, and we're all open now, Tom, or Mr. Jackson, for any questions that y'all may have.
So thank you for telling me that we finally reached the end of the presentation. I'll start to the left this time. Any questions?
Oh, and Debbie, say Debbie first.
Debbie, do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you. Julie?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you for the very thorough update. As I look into the audience and I see some of the faces of the people that put so much time and effort into developing this bond program. And when I look at all that is part of that program, it brought back some memories, and I think the twitch in my eye that I had for those three months that we worked on that. It was a lot of work. Just as a reminder, there were about 50 community members that were part of this committee. And it was, we had educators, we had parents, we had grandparents, business owners, pastors. We needed lots of prayers, didn't we, pastors, both of y'all? And students, we had students participate in the bond committee and provided fantastic input. And I see you, and there are parts of this bond that I connect directly with you and with you guys and with you. And I'm just so proud that that work has come to fruition. And maybe you're like me, when I drive down 290 and I see the VPAC going up, I mean, I almost have an accident every time because I'm like, oh, look at that building. And being in some of the new, the schools that have been renovated, that was a big part of this bond program was not just new facilities to accommodate growth, but it was to go back to aging facilities and to update them. Partly from an asset protection standpoint, we want to make sure that we keep the costs down. We update their HVAC and their carpet and their plumbing and the kitchens and all that kind of logistical infrastructure stuff. But a big part of it was to make sure that these older schools have the same high-performing, efficient, effective learning environments for kids. So no matter what your zip code, where you live in the district, you are still going to one of the very best schools that we can offer. And it looks just like one of the new schools on the inside. I've been to several of those schools that have been renovated, and they look amazing inside, and I'm so proud of them, and I'm proud of the work that the committee did. And I'm just grateful for the teams that have worked so hard to bring these projects to life. Thank you.
And to the right, Scott. Natalie?
No questions, but I did want to thank many people and Julie for leading that effort as a community volunteer. My pastor's here, and our church has adopted Hare Grove Elementary for many years. And the first day of school, I had the opportunity to walk kids to their rooms, and it was actually a bit of an adventure because of the changes in the building. And they had been there, even the kids have been around. But just seeing the response of the kiddos in a clean space and a newly refreshed space, but also remembering that those safety features went in place from the open concept schools. So appreciating how much that helps parents have peace of mind when they send their kids to school. So I congratulate the group for great work. And to Paula, speaking a whole nother language, thank you for the education today. That was great.
Gilbert?
Outstanding presentation as always by everyone in the whole group and administration. Always amazed at how you guys answered the questions before we can even get there to ask about a certain particular idea that we may have and stuff, though. Outstanding job. Thank you for recognizing your teams and everything. That's really nice to see the teams here because it's hard sometimes for us to, at least for me, to, who are still learning the faces. And so we have contractors here, right? Is that, the contractors are here? The gentleman? The...
We have several architects.
Can they stand up so I can at least know who they are?
IBI.
IBI? Thank you for coming here and stuff. I appreciate that. It's a long meeting, and it's at least a Monday night and not a Friday night, or Thursday night, not Friday night, so. There you go. Thank you very much because it's hard to tell the difference between what would seem most of the time our administration staff over there and stuff. Also, a couple of things, Matt. So I know you brought up the fact that we have logistics nightmares going on at this time. The same thing Bill said about the police vehicles. Are we somewhat near staying under our budget that we had gave out, or is that also increasing? Because that's all I hear around from the different people that I deal with inside or outside the community, that what cost initially this now is costing this, so.
Costs are going up. On the first two phases, we didn't experience a lot of cost increase. Actually, we probably got some pretty good value because when we bid them during COVID, the bids that we're taking now, we're starting to see those costs increase. And we hear anywhere from seven, depends on what trade it is, 7% to 30% increase. We haven't experienced a 30% increase, but we are seeing a little bit higher prices.
Right. Same thing, Bill. I'm assuming what led off world news the other day was the pricing of the vehicles going up substantially. And for our viewing audience, I can't imagine the nightmares you might be going through trying to get vehicles of that type on, you know, on the ground and stuff.
Fortunately, and I'll go ahead and recognize Dr. Kane Smith, our Director of Transportation, since I wasn't able to introduce him.
Our Texas State World Renown.
World Renown.
Right.
Director of the Year.
Yeah.
And Jennifer Chu, our Director of Procurement Services.
Excellent.
But yes, fortunately, when we ordered the school buses, we ordered it prior to all the increases going up. So even though there were some supplies shortages of materials, we got the pricing in just at the right time.
Okay.
As far as the police vehicles, we are working with our vendors that we've worked with over the years. We're not going to pay over sticker price for any of the vehicles, and we do get a tremendous discount as a government entity for the purchase of the vehicles. That's why they're not so fast to produce police vehicles as they can get a higher price for other vehicles.
Right. That's good to know that we're trying our best to save the bottom line for our community and stuff, though. That's very nice to hear that, though. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And to everybody else, Karen and the whole group, an other outstanding presentation. I appreciate everything that you guys do for the community and the district. Thank you, guys.
Community members, thank you for serving on the committee. Thank you also for sitting through the very long board meeting as well. As always, excellent presentation. Karen, to follow up on Gilbert's questions, you know, we take a look at this two different ways. One is the amount that we have spent, but the question that I always ask is one of construction accounting on percentage completion versus percentage of funds still available to be spent. I know it's a moving target, but do you have an idea roughly where we are? Are we over, under, or on track?
Well, I mean, we are base, I would say, number one, we're on track, but we are actually doing, I guess you could say a little bit better, like Matt Morgan said, that we had some savings at the beginning, and so we've had some things. Plus, we have like contingency money that we prepare for. Sometimes that's needed, but a lot of times it's not. So we've actually been fortunate that we probably have a little bit, depending on what happens with inflation, you know, excess as far as comparing it with what's been completed to date percentage of completion.
Thank you. I know that I quizzed the, for the bond package, I quizzed very hard about the inflation percentage that we had built in, and I know that Roy addressed that, and it seemed as if the number that he plugged in, we would never have to worry about it, but we're hitting your number, Roy, I hate to say. Karen, thank you ever so much, and I know you'll keep us apprised as we go along from a financial perspective. Thank you.
Mr. Jackson, if I could just add something to that. I visited with a couple of our architects last week, and I would say the four major projects we have are new projects, are the VPAC, the admin, the middle school, and the elementary. Our architects told me we hit it just right. If it had just been six months later, it would have been a 20% higher cost on all of those because of all the problems mentioned. So we, good planning, but good fortune, too, as was said. And just one other thing that I would like to add, and certainly our community members out here, and we thank you so much for serving because we really did, that was pretty intensive for three months. So appreciate you volunteering. But I'd also like to recognize Teresa Hall and Julie Heineman, who was not on the board at the time, who were co-chairs of that committee and kept us focused and moving in the right direction. So thank you, everyone, for your willingness to serve our community.
One more comment off script. I presented on education matters around the state. One of the matters that I was requested to make a presentation on is the impact of a fast-growth school district. We bear a disproportionate share of the cost of educating the growth of students in the state of Texas. And one of the ways that that happens is we suffer the cost of inflation. A school building that we construct today is much more expensive than one that was constructed five or even 10 years ago. We were recognized by the state of Texas as being exemplary in that regard. And as part of the process of preparing the presentation, I interviewed Roy Sprague on it, and the observation he made was in part because the school board was able to work in tandem with management to quickly address the needs of the district supported by the community so that we, unlike other districts, would be able to have contracts ready, the trades could rely upon the fact that we would stand firm behind the contracts. And we often had the trade working on our contracts earlier than other districts. And as a result, we could achieve greater savings and take advantage of opportunities as they presented themselves. I only bring it up because there are ancillary benefits for our students from a cohesive board and working together in tandem with management. And this is just one of those that doesn't come to mind because you don't think about it unless you happen to be in a fast-growth school district like ours. 8B. The administration will prepare an oral report on the Safety and Security Action Plan. The presenters are Teresa Hall, Franklin Sampson, Tracy Schluter, Eric Mendez.
Good evening, President Jackson, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Henry. This evening, we would like to provide you with an update on Goal Two, Target Objective One, which is the continuation of the implementation of our Safety and Security Action Plan. Just want to give, for the benefit of our new trustees, I want to provide you with just a little bit of background before we begin the presentation on the development of this plan. The plan was developed, Mr. Weckerly, can you go to the next slide? The plan was developed in the summer of 2018. This was done in the aftermath of two tragedies that occurred at Parkland, Florida, and then one close to home at Santa Fe, Texas. So that summer, Santa Fe, as you know, occurred in May. And then we quickly convened a Safety and Security Committee that summer and started our work in evaluating our current safety and security measures. As you heard from Mr. Morgan with the update on the 2014 bond program, we had started our work on the update of safety and security to our facilities. But we wanted to go back and look at other areas, and a part of the focus or the focus of the committee was not only to look at further facility improvements, but also behavioral and procedural improvements, mental health and counseling, and then training for our staff and students. So in addition to the work that our committee was doing, on May 30th, the governor released a safety, a school and firearm safety action plan that included 20-plus recommendations that he asked for school districts to consider implementing prior to the start of the 2018-19 school year. In addition, he made some recommendations for proposed legislation going into the 2019 legislative session in January of that year. So the committee really took all of that information, and we really took, broke down all of those recommendations that were included in that Safety and Security Action Plan. And we actually created a report where we were addressing every single area that was there. In addition, we were trying to be proactive in what we thought may come out of the next legislative session. And as you know, in January of 2019, Senate Bill 11 passed, which was a very comprehensive safety and security plan. And I'm just so pleased to share that we were way ahead. In addition to that, Dr. Henry had the real vision to call another bond program and make certain that in that bond program in 2019, when we began that work, that we increased our safety and security measures to our facilities. And you got to hear all of that, especially at our elementary campuses with the wall segmentation and making certain that we minimized the opportunity for intruders to enter into our classroom areas at the elementary campuses. So this evening, we're really going to go through and provide you with an update on that. Really, since the plan was implemented in August of 2018, we've made minimal changes really to the safety and security measures. The most significant changes, as you heard, occurred with the facility upgrades and the work in making certain that we have sound processing. The most significant changes, as you heard, occurred with the facility upgrades and the work in making certain that we have sound processes and procedures for identifying and intervening on potential threats, both threats to our students and staff and threats to, to, to individuals themselves. And that's through the work of our mental health intervention teams, our guidance and counseling team, and our psychological services team. They are instrumental in our safety and security action plan. I would like to point out, and I apologize, maybe our agenda item didn't provide enough information for our community, but the safety and security information is posted on the district website. If you go to Parents and Students, there's a link to safety, and all of our safety and security action plan, as it's currently implemented, is listed there, along with the committee that developed the plan and other information. So just want to provide that clarification that that information has been on our district website and is currently there, and we will be providing some updates. So would now like to turn over the presentation to Chief Mendez, and he's going to kind of talk you through these areas.
Good evening, President Jackson, Dr. Henry, Board of Trustees. I'm just going to cover some of our safety and security action plans that we have for our police department and in our district. We have four different components, the Safety and Security Committee, Prevention Component, Identification Intervention, and our Response. Oh, it did work, Leslie. I wasn't sure. Anyway, our Safety and Security Committee has a Senate, been a Senate Bill 11 during the 86th legislative session. We already had a Safety and Security Committee within our district, but that bill changed the requirements of how many individuals we had and who needed to be on the committee. So as you can see on the slide, we added the County Office of Emergency Management. We added representation from them. It says Local Police Department and Sheriff's Department, since we're mostly unincorporated, Precinct Four, Precinct Five, constables, as well as the Sheriff's Department, provide representation during the committee meetings. Our Police Department, I represent the Police Department. The Board President or a designee, I'm sorry, the Board President and one of the Board members attend the meeting, the superintendent and a designated superintendent. We do have teachers that sit on the committee, as well as parents of currently enrolled students that sit on the committee. Their responsibilities vary pretty much, it's pretty broad, but they do cover everything that has to do with creating our district's emergency operations plans, not just the district, but they do have input on the campus operation plans. They do provide periodic updates to the Board of Trustees and the district administration, providing recommendations about our emergency operations plan. I'm not going to read all these, but they're, they're part of the Safety and Security Audit and what we provide to the Texas School Safety Center. They review each report the district submits to the School Safety Center. We consult with local law enforcement agencies on how to increase their presence near our district campuses. They provide for the select locations of bleeding control stations in our schools. We are required to meet publicly, and they meet once a semester and once during the summer. And those meetings are posted in, kind of in accordance like they do with the board meetings. And all of the committee members are trained on psychological first aid. Our prevention piece of our Safety and Security Plan, as you know, we have a law enforcement presence. We have a, School District Police Department currently has 110 allotted officers in our department. We have two officers at every high school, one at every middle school. We have a dedicated patrol division for our day patrol, is dedicated to our elementary schools. The school district is cut into six zones. In those six zones, we have approximately nine elementaries per zone, and then we have the 12 officers allotted for day patrol to those zones so that we can provide coverage to each of our elementaries. Our secondary campuses are required to wear their identification badges so that we know who is on campus at all times and who belongs there and who doesn't. We instituted the clear backpack policy. I know that it wasn't very favorable at the time, but it does work. It was within that first semester that we instituted the clear backpack policy, that we actually had an individual on a high school campus that wasn't supposed to be there, and it was identified by a staff member because the individual was carrying a backpack that was not clear. And so that really does work. We instituted a clear bag policy at our stadiums so that we can make sure that our staff and our students and our participants and our visitors to the events are safe and that someone is not bringing something they should not. We do have metal detectors in the district. We do set up the metal detectors at our football games. You'll see them when you go through the gates. Everyone goes through screening. On the campuses, metal detectors are done in a random fashion. The campus administration will determine what days, what areas of the school, and how many students to create a percentage of the number of students to do random screening, so the students never know when they're going to be screened. It's set up by the administration. We do have four canines in our district. Our Police Department has four canines. Three are specifically for narcotics and black powder. So those black powder ammunition, weapons, narcotics, and they do random searches. The elementary schools love our canines. When they do presentations, the kids cannot get enough of those kid, the dogs on the campuses. They just, they have great demeanor, and, and the students really love them. So the dogs are great. Part of our identification and intervention, we do have the Cyfair tip line. The tip line is kind of like Crime Stoppers, for those that don't know. Students and staff, and actually anybody in our Cyfair School District that hears of information that is concerning to any one campus can provide a tip. They can go online to the district's website. There's a link to get on the tip line, and they can submit a tip online. It's anonymous. They can provide the information to us. The tips are monitored 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We have a large screen in dispatch where we can see the tips come in. I also know that the tips are sent to the campuses that are listed so that their campus administration is notified. The tip line provides various information, anything from behavior to criminal to concerns. It is not uncommon for our police department in the evening and overnight hours to knock on doors when we have tips of concern where someone has reported that someone may be bringing a weapon to school the next day, or that someone has reported that they believe a certain student may be in crisis and may be contemplating suicide. It's not uncommon for us to knock on doors at 9:10, 11:00, midnight, 1:00 in the morning to check on those students to ensure that the next day is safe for the campus staff or that student has the resources they need to be safe. We also, we also receive information from the Houston Fusion Center and from the Harris County Security and Emergency Management Intelligent Task Force. They are very helpful in providing any information that they receive as it relates to our school district. We also use them to get information when conducting an investigation that we believe is pertinent to our district and the safety of our students. Our investigators in our Police Department will reach out to them to provide information and help track down primarily social media threats, or really what's the big one out there nowadays. We do our own social media monitoring within our investigative corps, as well as, I know that IT has Content Keeper, and Content Keeper does, it does monitor the internet traffic in our school district and looks for keyword searches. So if a student puts in, they're looking to buy a gun or get a gun, those, those kinds of information is flagged. We have a mental health intervention team. You've kind of already heard about them, and we have the four licensed professional counselors, two mental health officers from our department, and the two psychologists. I will say that while the mental health intervention team has two mental health officers, we actually have 57 certified mental health officers in our Police Department. And so while those two work with the team to do follow-ups and provide resources to the student and families, we do have 55 others that help day in and day out at every campus with different calls when it comes to our students and when they might be in crisis. Our response is our emergency operations planning. And like I said, our district does have a district-wide emergency operations plan with several annexes that address train derailments, hurricanes, fires, different information. And then all of our campuses have emergency operations plans. You'll notice right under Emergency Operation Plans, it says Navigate 360. Navigate 360 is a, is a application platform that we went to on our, our devices, on cell phones or computers. Our campuses can easily access their emergency operation plans or reunification plans in the event of an emergency. So the days of grabbing the emergency bag, which was a huge bag that had all the paperwork that they would need for an emergency, for reunifications and rosters and all that, is now at their fingertips on their device. It's in their hand and easily accessible. For our first responders, it helps us because on Navigate 360, we have every floor plan of every campus in the district, and we can share that with responders so that they have the ability to see the floor plan, as well as it contains 360-degree views of inside the building pictures so that we can look and see what each corner looks like as, in the event of an emergency, first responders can see what this hallway would look like and what the doorways would look like and what the classrooms would look like, and what to expect as they make entry. Or for firefighters, if there was a fire, they would know the layout of the building. Every campus has a crisis response team. It can, it consists of the campus admin, the campus counselors, and the officers on the campus, and they address emergencies that arise on campus. And of course, School Messenger is our mass notification system in our district. Obviously, we still ask that, through the ad right there, we still ask parents, text Y or yes to 67587 to participate in the notification system. We want our parents to be able to receive mass notification in the event of an emergency. It helps us and it helps them. They know right away, and, and it doesn't tie up phone lines trying to get that information out. Trainings. These are some of the trainings that we provide through the Police Department. I will say that because of COVID, while COVID was a bad thing and it really hampered our school district business, it kind of really helped us incorporate online training. And so now all those trainings that you see in front of you, the tip line, the Raptor, the standard response protocols, all of that is online and it's available to all of our staff anytime they want to take it, and they can go through the professional growth system to take those trainings. And I think we are now on to Guidance and Counseling.
Before we proceed to 8C. We're still on 8B. We just had safety, we just had safety and security. Okay, Franklin, microphone is yours.
Thank you, sir, to President Jackson, to Dr. Henry, and the Board of Trustees, of course. So thanks for this opportunity. I'm here to just talk about the Department of Guidance and Counseling, but if you will indulge me for just a second and allow me to salute all counselors and CFISD, as well as across the state of Texas and our nation, because it's National School Counselor Week. So we're extremely proud of that. And looking at our department, of course, my direct report is Mr. Roy Garcia, the one and only. And of course, there are three excellent, caring, and intelligent coordinators that work with me, and I'd like to acknowledge them at this time, if you would stand, Angela Williams-Thomas, Angie Rhimes, and Mary Heston. They are super ladies, and I'm thankful to have the opportunity to work with them. They, of course, assist with our elementary counselors, our middle school counselors, as well as our high school counselors. When we look at the breakdown of our counselors within our district, as you can see, we have 108 counselors on the high school level, and you can see the breakdown of middle school counselors. But I want to note the importance of the two elementary counselors on each campus. Let me say thank you again to Dr. Henry and the Board of Trustees for approving the opportunity to have two allocations on every single elementary campus. CFISD is one of the only independent school districts that have that, and that is noteworthy, and I want to make sure that everyone is aware of that. In addition to that, we have four mental health intervention counselors. Chief just spoke a little bit about it. We'll talk a little bit more about them in just a few minutes. But we also have a substance use intervention counselor. And that, that, that job, of course, consists of assisting our, our students who have, of course, substance issues, substance abuse issues, or the, the real term is substance use. That's the new adopted term in that field, substance use versus substance abuse. In addition to that, of course, our secretaries, and I mentioned our coordinators just a few minutes ago. Sorry, I moved prematurely here. When we look at the duties that, or the things in which that are, Joel, can you help me go back? Thank you, sir. When we look at what our counselors have done over the course of the year, you can see that the job of a school counselor is multifaceted. In other words, it consists of not only mental health support, but it also consists of being there and providing academic support towards our kids. That does involve the, of course, administration of or assistance and testing interpretation of SAT scores, PSAT scores. It also involves GT testing. As you can see, roughly 3,000 kids were tested for gifted and talented during the year of 2021. We screened many at-risk kids for suicide. Those tips that came in, or students that, of course, reported that a student was possibly in crisis. So that is done, of course, daily. When we perform our duties as school counselors, the duties that are performed should fall under the Texas Comprehensive School Counseling Program. There are four components, Guidance Curriculum, Individual Planning, System Support, and Responsive Services. Senate Bill 179 speaks to that, whereas 80% of the counselor's time should be devoted to the duties outlined in that Texas Comprehensive School Counseling Program model. We provided just a few examples on the high school level, the middle school level, as well as the elementary level, just examples under those four components. We're also thankful, as a district, to have 19 youth service specialists. This is remarkable because this is a partnership between Harris County and Cyfair Independent School District, whereas we pay for half of their salaries and Harris County pays for the other half. These are what you probably know as social workers, and they are super. You can, as you can see from the slide here, as far as the response or students served, 39% high school students, 41% elementary students, and 20% for middle school. It's pretty self-explanatory because with 41%, of course, that's K through 12, they're more, and then, of course, high school is four years, and then elementary, three years. So you can see the percentages affected, how they affected this pie chart. In addition to that, I would like to note that our youth service specialists are very instrumental in carrying out duties for our students who struggle financially, emotionally, and many other, and many other things they provide support for. I want to also take this opportunity to thank our donors who have given to the Sarah Simple Fund. That's a fund that we have set aside simply for those who have financial concerns that we need to meet immediate needs for. Our, our youth service specialists are very, very involved in that process. In addition to that, over the holidays, we gave out roughly $13,000 worth of gifts. So we made many holidays pretty happy for quite a few kids. Thankfully, this past December, I actually, a day or two before Christmas, also went out with them and gave out to, gave perishable and non-perishable items to a family to last them for an entire week. This is something that is done also on a monthly basis at Cy Ridge High School. We provide what we call the Rams Market, and that's when we get out thousands of pounds to our community there through Houston Food Bank. And we also do it at least once a month at Jersey Village, and that's what we call simply the Falcon Food Distribution. So our youth service specialists, again, are very instrumental in making that happen. Basic needs are met, school support, student support, and mental health concerns. They're also involved in our crisis response, on our crisis response team. We've had roughly 35 or so, or we had 35 or so crisis response situations. That's when there's a death of a staff member or of a student, and our youth service specialists serve as, of course, grief counselors, along with our school counselors on the campuses. Moving on, just, moving on, we are, of course, we need to mention that some of the programs that are, the Department of Guidance and Counseling provides, and that is ongoing or continuing education. There are counselor clinics. We also provide College Night on an annual basis for kids, and then we also have smaller college nights that we also provide to our students and our parents. The past couple of years, we've had to go virtual, but hopefully we'll go back to face-to-face College Night here pretty soon. I would like to mention the wellness program as well. That's another opportunity for our staff members to take advantage of, those who may be struggling or those who just need someone to talk to. We have licensed professionals that service all of our staff members. It really does matter. It really does matter if there's someone who is a bus driver or an administrator on a campus, we see all of those staff members and provide at least two sessions for them. There have been a few that we've allowed three sessions for, but we definitely meet the needs as they arise. As Roy mentioned, one of the initiatives is, of course, Joel's team and others have helped us with this, and that is making sure that the word was out that we have a comfort dog on campus full-time. And we are continuing to add additional comfort dogs on different campuses across our district. That's one of the initiatives that we put in place in order to help with mental health awareness. We also have mental health alliances on our campuses. That's a student-led group where those kids who have a desire to get the word out in regards to taking care of themselves and making sure that they understand it's okay to not be okay, but it's not okay to remain there. So, some of those things, they are getting the word out on, and we definitely are appreciative of that. The bottom right-hand corner, suicide prevention number, or information is on every student's ID badge on the back portion of it. It is our desire, hopefully, that they will call a number before they decide to take their own lives. The Guidance and Counseling Department also has a few initiatives that we've put into place, one of which is the Aspiring Counselor Institute, another of which is the Counselor Leadership Institute. I'm also happy to share that we also have a partnership with Sam Houston State University, and this year, we're in our second year of our counseling cohort. So, in a few months, we'll have our first graduates of our recent connection or partnership with Sam Houston State University, and we're looking forward to hiring new counselors. I'm going to turn it over to Tracy Schluter, and she's going to talk about the Department
Good evening, President Jackson, Dr. Henry, and CFISD Board of Trustees. It is a pleasure to be with you tonight, to speak with you on behalf of the CFISD Department of Psychological Services and the Mental Health Intervention Team. My name is Dr. Tracy Schluter, and I'm the Director of the Psychological Services Department. The mission of the Department of Psychological Services is to provide quality, broadly-based psychological services through the school district through a comprehensive service delivery system. The CFISD Psychological Services Department falls under the leadership and guidance of Dr. Linda Macias, Chief Academic Officer of Curriculum and Instruction and Accountability, and Mrs. Barbara Lewandowski, the Assistant Superintendent for Educational Support Services. Our Psychological Services Department leadership consists of two lead psychologists, Dr. Sarah Glennon and Dr. John Namura, as well as a coordinator for our American Psychological Association accredited doctoral internship program, Dr. Jamie Griffin. Cypress Fairbanks ISD Department of Psychological Services has 35 allocated staff positions. All of the staff are doctoral-trained professionals licensed by the Texas Behavioral Health Executive Council, or BHAC, and the Texas State Board of Examiners of Psychologists, or TSBEP. As licensed specialists in school psychology, or LSSPs, you can see that we like a lot of letters here, in addition to our, in addition, 25 of our staff are duly licensed through the BHAC, TSBEP, as licensed psychologists. Our department's two lead psychologists devote half of their allocation to lead duties, providing support to our staff. The other half of their allocation is devoted to direct provision of services to students, staff, and families at assigned campuses, as well as intern supervision. Our department coordinator of interns is responsible for the day-to-day functioning of our doctoral internship training program. Our two mental health intervention team psychologists serve as adjunct members of our department team and provide substantial support to their psychological services colleagues throughout the academic year. Additionally, our department is supported by two amazing administrative staff, Mrs. Lindsay Cabrera and Mrs. Marcella Cavasis. As licensed specialists in school psychology, our staff and interns apply expertise in mental health, learning, and behavior to help children and youth succeed academically, socially, behaviorally, and emotionally. We partner with families, teachers, school administrators, counselors, and other professionals to create safe, healthy, supportive learning environments that strengthen connections between home, school, and community. During the 2021 school year, the Department of Psychological Services staff and interns worked diligently to ensure that all students in Cyfair ISD continue to receive robust mental health supports whether these students were present for learning in person, or on one of our campuses, or through virtual learning online. Over the 2021 school year, our staff completed over 1,308 psychological evaluations for students across the district. They served 1,252 students as part of their special education, individual education program, or IEP, and they supported over 3,181 general and special education students overall across the district. Additionally, our staff assisted at 25 crisis responses in support of students and staff following the death of a Cyfair ISD student or staff member during the school year. As you can see from the graph pictured on the screen, which are split into service delivery for elementary and then secondary campuses, much of our time each week as psychological services providers in Cyfair ISD is spent divided amongst evaluation, direct counseling, and behavioral and instructional consultative services. Psychological services providers offer indirect psychological services to students following a referral by appropriate school district personnel or an IEP committee, and after obtaining written and informed guardian consent. Examples of this type of service delivery might include consultation with teachers in the early childhood special education program, in a pre-kindergarten classroom, in a life skills classroom, or an adaptive behavior classroom. Psychological services providers might also work in this regard to obtain a confidential release in order to communicate with practitioners and outside agencies in order to ensure continuity of care as a student transitions back to a Cyfair ISD school from either a hospitalization, a juvenile justice system placement, another school district, or when a student is currently working with a mental health provider in the private sector. Comprehensive psychological evaluations with written informed guardian consent are completed by psychological services providers when students are referred for the purpose of determining special education under Texas Education Agency criteria. CFISD psychological services staff provide direct services to at-risk students through counseling, either through group or individual means, based on their targeted goals which are developed from their current psychological evaluation, and progress monitoring data once these goals are accepted as part of the student's individual education program by the IEP committee. These sessions are provided as a related service and are part of their IEP and are intended to support the student with accessing the general education curriculum. Services are offered on a scheduled basis as determined by the IEP committee. CFISD psychological staff are also provide ongoing case management for students on their IEP caseload through continual data collection and progress monitoring. Additional responsibilities of our department's staff and interns include attending campus staffings and IEP meetings, providing direct services to families including parent training, crisis response support to campuses and communities, preparing and presenting presentation programs such as in-service on campuses, and workshops at the district level, department staff, intern, and postdoctoral trainings, program development and evaluation, research projects, and community outreach. I'd like to share with you a few of our awards that our team has accomplished. Our department was recognized in 2018 as the Texas Association of School Psychologists, or TASP, by TASP, as the recipient of its Outstanding Delivery of School Psychological Services Award. Also, in 2019, Dr. Michelle Pastorek, who is one of our MHI T psychologists, was recognized as the Outstanding School Psychologist at the doctoral level by the Texas State, by the Texas Association of School Psychologists at the state level. She was also honored with additional recognition in 2020 by being named as a CFISD Wall of Fame recipient. Additionally, the department was recognized, along with the CFISD Guidance and Counseling Department, by Mental Health America and the Center for School Behavioral Health in 2019 as a bronze recognition award recipient for our combined efforts in collaborating and supporting the efforts of the Center for School Behavioral Health Work Group. Psychological services staff provide training to staff at the campus level throughout the year through collaborative efforts with campus leadership. Additionally, psychological services staff provide training at the district level through collaborative efforts with district leadership. Historically, we have had the opportunity to provide multiple trainings at both CFISD teacher RRR and paraprofessional conferences throughout the years. Presentations provided have covered a variety of topics, including but not limited to the ones that you see here on the screen. Additionally, our staff have presented to colleagues and professionals at the Region Four Service Center, in neighboring school districts, at conferences at the state, and conferences at the national level. Psychological services collaborates with the Guidance and Counseling Department to ensure that campuses are supported in the event of a crisis. Staff in our department are trainers in crisis preparedness, intervention, and response using all of the models that you see here to the right of the screen. The National Association of School Psychologists, or NASP, Model of Training, called PREPARE, trains school-employed, school-employed mental health professionals and other educators how to best fill their roles and responsibilities generated by their membership on school crisis response teams. PREPARE is the only comprehensive, nationally-available curriculum training, training curriculum that is developed by educators who have school crisis response experience and formal training for educators. Our department currently staffs four trainers for both Workshop One and Workshop Two of the PREPARE model. This allows us, as a district, to provide sustainability in our training, as we are able to train new staff and incoming interns each year, as well as district counselors, youth service specialists, which Mr. Sampson just spoke about, and at no cost to the district with the exception of purchasing training materials. The National Organization for Victims Assistance Crisis Response Team Training has over 30 years of evidence-informed and field-test-based practices as a crisis management utility that includes trauma mitigation and education protocols. We have been utilizing the NOVA Basic Crisis Response Team Training in Cyfair ISD for the past 20 years, and we are fortunate to have a trainer among our staff. Again, this opportunity to train in-house allows for sustainability, as we can provide NOVA training annually, each year, for new psychological services staff, our interns, and our youth service specialists, at no cost to the district with the exception of the training material fees. NOVA training consists of 24 hours of techniques and protocols for providing crisis intervention to traumatized individuals. The training focuses on the fundamentals of crisis and trauma, and how to adapt basic techniques to individuals and to groups. Finally, our department also offers training in psychological first aid for schools. Psychological first aid for schools is an evidence-informed intervention model to assist students, families, school personnel, and school partners in the immediate aftermath of an emergency, and can be used by any trained staff member or community partner. Once again, our psychological services department has a psychological first aid in the school's trainer on staff, and we offer this training annually to new psychological services staff and interns, as well as district counselors and youth service specialists, again, providing sustainability with regard to this important intervention tool. Additionally, this training was provided for all members of the CFISD Safety and Security Committee, as Chief Mendez spoke about earlier, in December of 2020, to fulfill the Texas Education Code Section 37.109, that members of the district's school safety and security committee receive training on integrating psychological safety and suicide prevention strategies into the district's plan. The Department of Psychological Services has offered professional psychology intern training since 1984. For those of you that can't do quick math like I can't, I figured it out, that's 38 years. Our training program has been accredited through the American Psychological Association Commission since 1992. To date, we have had 230 interns who have been successfully trained through CFISD's internship training program. Currently, 10 funded internship positions are filled each year using a national match system comparable to the medical student placement for residency. Our CFISD doctoral internship program has the largest internship cohort in the nation in a single school district. As you can see from the colorful map on the right of the screen, CFISD recruits doctoral students from highly competitive universities located across the United States, and we've even had someone from Canada. After completing their academic school year internship with CFISD, interns venture into their postdoctoral year to practice in settings both locally and at times throughout the country. Of important note, our retention rate of hiring on interns to become part of our CFISD psychological services staff is high, with close to 90% of our current staff being former interns of our program. Our 10 CFISD doctoral psychology interns provide, currently provide 320 hours of educational support services to students each week, including conducting evaluations, providing related services and behavior support, and consultation, all under the guidance and the supervision of an assigned licensed psychologist who has serves as their supervisor. Additional opportunities for interns and staff to support students and families within our department include participation in the following offerings. The Family Interaction Training Clinic, or FIT Clinic. Through the FIT Clinic, interns provide parent training and behavior consultation services in the evening, one day a week, to families across the district during both the fall and the spring semester. The clinic's treatment program is rendered at minimal cost to families and uses evidence-based interventions. Clinic services are supervised by licensed psychologists onsite. The Incredible Years Autism Program. This program is intended for families who have a child between the ages of two and five years of age who are on the autism spectrum, or are experiencing speech delay or other developmental delay. This program is offered in a parenting group format, weekly, during the spring semester each year. Goals include introducing ways to promote language skills, school readiness, and emotional self-regulation. And finally, our parent training component. A three-week parenting course offering, three-week parenting course offerings are typically provided in both the fall and the spring, either in person at host schools or via Zoom. Most recently, we have partnered with the CFISD Communications Department to video-record, edit, and produce our parenting courses, and we will be releasing two courses this semester on our Cyfair ISD Department of Psychological Services website for 24/7 access to parents and families. One course will address parenting young and elementary-aged children, and a second course will address parenting adolescents. All courses will be offered in both English and Spanish. And now, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Sampson.
We're just going to talk just briefly about the Mental Health Intervention Team, and for the sake of time, we want the, with the Mental Health Intervention Team, if they could stand at this time, I won't, of course, call all of their names out right now, but the purpose of the Mental Health Intervention Team is to provide support to our students, our staff, to our community, and to others, and we take a proactive approach in doing so. This is a timeline, just so that you can take a look at it. Teresa shared earlier in regards to how this started, and then where we are today. But the Mental Health Intervention Team consists of four mental health intervention counselors. All four are licensed professional counselors. All four are licensed professional counselors, and then one licensed professional counselor-supervisor. We have two mental health officers, as Chief shared earlier, and then finally, two psychologists, which are doctoral psychologists. And then Trace is going to talk about the ins and outs of the team and some of the accolades.
Okay. While each of our three disciplines combine to form our mental health, our CFISD MHIT, and they have specific functions, the Mental Health Intervention Team as a whole is really driven by these four core duty areas. The first of which is suicide prevention and response, where the team supports suicide prevention efforts in the district by continually researching and providing strong preventative programs and direct ongoing support to students and families who are at risk for suicidal behaviors. Mental Health Intervention Team members train all district staff who may need to support a student in crisis, including campus counselors, psychological services providers, youth service specialists, and law enforcement members. The Threat Prevention and Response portion, similarly, when there is a concern that a student may pose a threat of violence towards others, the MHIT will respond to support those students and campuses to help mitigate that risk. MHIT actively supports Texas Senate Bill 11 mandates by providing ongoing opportunities for communication and training with district and campus leadership, continually seeking to learn and expand upon their own knowledge within the field, and engaging in the promotion of rigorous research-based threat assessment trainings and procedures across Cypher ISD. With regard to general mental health, the MHIT promotes positive mental health broadly throughout the district by leading and supporting awareness campaigns, producing targeted resources, spearheading general mental health support programs, and continually working directly with campuses and families to support any need in this area. And finally, crisis response. The MHIT supports the crisis, the district's crisis response teams in the aftermath of crisis by sending members to respond directly to campus buildings and communities, as well as training all district crisis responders in several research-based modalities that I've mentioned earlier. You got it, Joel? Thank you. With regard to trainings, mirroring the core duties of the MHIT, these trainings provide supports and the opportunities to develop professional relationships and ongoing dialogue between district and campus leaders and the MHIT team. Trainings supportive of suicide prevention and response include annual trainings and on-call availability to support campus counselors regarding CFISD suicide prevention and response procedures, and our standard risk assessment protocol tool, the Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scale, or the CSSRS. Similarly, with regard to threat prevention and response, the MHIT provides district training to student, training to district administrators, including principals, associate principals, and assistant principals regarding threat of violence assessment and response procedures, and the use of our district's adopted model, the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines Model, or CSTACK. Again, MHIT staff are available to provide campus safe, supportive school program teams, or SSSP teams, support and ongoing consultation through phone, Zoom, or in-person campus visits. With regard to general mental health, the Mental Health Intervention Team has developed and recorded video training modules for parents and staff to promote awareness with regard to the following topics: social media safety, mental health awareness, accessing mental health services and supports in the Northwest Houston, Greater Houston community, and caring for the caregiver. These offerings are just a handful of examples of trainings that have been developed and produced by the MHIT team. This team is regularly producing targeted trainings based on campus requests and student-staff community needs across the district. And then finally, crisis response, as noted earlier in my section of the presentation, district psychologists and MHIT psychologists collaborate as trainers to provide annual trainings to staff, interns, counselors, and youth service specialists regarding crisis prevention, intervention, and response. Chief Mendez, Mr. Sampson, and I are proud to share with you all, with all of you, that the tireless work of this team of eight has been duly noted and highly praised across our local community and at the state level during their four years of existence here in Cypher ISD. Our Mental Health Intervention Team is the 2021 recipient of the statewide Positive School Climate and Prevention Program Award, given by the Texas School Safety Center. Additionally, the MHIT's CFISD Community Suicide Prevention Newsletter has been highlighted by the TEA, or Texas Education Agency, as a model newsletter in their communication to regional service centers across the state of Texas. Furthermore, the TEA will be using Cypher ISD's suicide prevention structure as a model template for all school districts across the state of Texas via the TEA School Mental Health website, starting this spring semester of 2022. Because of their remarkable achievements and the team's development of user-friendly trainings and procedures, the Mental Health Team has been readily sought out by our neighboring school districts to provide consultation and collegial collaboration. Additionally, they have been invited to speak at a variety of local and state conferences to share the development, developmental process of the team, their duties, and their protocols and initiatives. Again, Chief Mendez, Mr. Sampson, and I are very proud of the amazing individuals who make up the Mental Health Intervention Team and their collaborative accomplishments over the past four years. We are also grateful, Dr. Henry, to you, to the district-level cabinet, and to the Board of Trustees, the endeavors of our individual departments, and the collaborative efforts of the MHIT layer together to assist in providing a foundation of support for the academic learning of all students, and the welfare of our staff, and the Cypher ISD community as a whole. We thank you for your time and allowing us to share this presentation with you all this evening. Now, I think we have, if there's any questions.
I started moving along with you on the slide, so I now know who passes on to who. So to the right, questions, comments? Nadley?
We keep referring to, first of all, great presentation, and our students are fortunate to have a team. I'm glad you recognized them. It was very nice to see them. Of a job that is very vital, especially going on right now with the kids coming back into school at the high percentage that we are, and, and readapting to social skills. We know there's a lot of stress going on there on both sides. I didn't hear much about our educators. Is that something just on their insurance, Teresa? Or because I, everybody's stressed out. You see it every day, and nonetheless, our educators as well, staff and everybody else, day in and day out. Is that something that they can tend to, or is that something?
We have online recharging stations for our teachers that the Mental Health Intervention Team put together. We've also provided different trainings for them as well, and we also, I mentioned, the wellness program. That is a counseling or therapeutic type of opportunity for all of our staff to take advantage of, where they can speak with a licensed professional, free of charge.
Excellent. That's what I was looking for, and I appreciate the note there, because, you know, of course, our students are welfare that we certainly want to make sure they're taken care of, but also our staff and our educators for the last two years, an abundance of time being put in, though. I appreciate that very much. Thank you, and I like that suit.
Thanks.
And to my left, Luke? Julie? Debbie?
Yes, I just would like to thank Mr. Sampson and Ms. Schluter, and Chief Mendez for just doing an excellent job of, you know, when this, we first talked about this several years ago, or it may be more than that, because as I age, time goes by more quickly. But anyway, y'all have done a tremendous job informing, informing this group, and what a great resource for our, our staff and our students. And I just want to commend you for all you do, all the measures that are taken to keep our students as safe as possible, and, you know, we are recognized across the state for, for what we are doing. So thank you very much for all your efforts. They are truly appreciated.
Excellent presentation. Do we have a rough idea of where we are percentage-wise of staffing, both in our police department as well as in our counseling and mental health departments?
We are almost fully staffed. We only have one opening right now. Is that where you're referencing?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. We have one opening at Thornton, and that's a coordinating counselor position, because that counselor moved to a high school, so we have one opening.
Excellent. Thank you. And Chief?
So out of the 110 positions that were allotted, with five new hires starting in approximately a week, we'll have three openings.
Excellent. You know, that's, that's the best news we've had on staffing since I've been a trustee. Well done. Thank you. And we have a whole host of folks that have been waiting for us to get to some items. I'm going to move a couple of them forward. I am trying to move it along. So let's go ahead and move 10G and 10H to the next items on the menu. 10G, the board will consider approving construction proposals and contracts paid from bond funds to the recommended contractors, and authorize the superintendent or designated to execute all necessary documents related to such contracts as follows. 10G1, 2021 Emory and Hemingway Elementary School renovations. 10G2, 2021 Farnie, McPhee, and Swinkie Elementary School renovations. Matt Morgan?
I have a presentation. Questions? Yes, Mr. Jackson?
Questions? None from the right. Debbie? Okay, Debbie shook her head no. Very quickly, give us a thumbnail sketch of what the renovations are for, and then, secondly, remind us whether or not any of these campuses required any mitigation.
Yes, sir. All of these campuses are receiving the safety and security components approved in the 2019 bond. Swinkie will also be getting a kitchen, as will McPhee, and all three of them are getting furniture replacements as well. None of these schools received any flooding that required any mitigation during Harvey.
On the furniture replacement, are these the school desks that we grew up with, or is this updated furniture?
It's updated furniture, sorry. It provides a flexible learning atmosphere so children can move around, they can put the desk together so they can collaborate. It's 21st century furniture.
And have we received information in the past that the updated furniture actually assists in student attainment?
Yes, sir. There are a lot of studies that support that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
10H, the board will consider awarding bids and contracts and/or authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda item. 10H1, audiovisual supplies. 10H2, classroom supplies and curriculum equipment. 10H3, furniture and equipment. 10H4, special education equipment, supplies, repair, parts, and labor. Bill Powell, if you're available to answer any questions, once again, to the right, Scott? None? None from Nadley? Luke? Debbie?
No questions.
Excellent. No questions, Bill. Thank you ever so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Your best presentation ever.
So to the board, do y'all need a five-minute break? Are y'all doing okay? All good. We're done. Let's move along. Let's see, the next item that we'll go back to, Item 8C. The administration will provide an oral report on the 2021-2022 Board Monitoring System. Presenters: Teresa Hall, Dr. Linda Macias, Dr. Deborah Stewart, Roy Garcia, Karen Smith, Roy Sprague. We have some heavy lifting here.
President Jackson, as I mentioned in the information I provided to you...
And pardon me one second. I need some technology help. Somehow I managed to move out of our program. Teresa, go ahead. Thank you.
As I mentioned, we do not plan to provide a presentation, but we can just kind of go through and show you again on the screen. You should have that on your monitors as well, the changes that we made based on the feedback that you provided. So really, what we are needing tonight is just consensus from the board on the modifications that we've made, so that we can move forward with finalizing the plan. So any questions, comments that you may have for any of us on any of the goals? We'll be ready to take those.
So I need to be at the board monitoring. So bear with me. The way we're going to handle this is we'll take it, questions category by category. So goal number one...
Okay. Joel, can you, there you go.
Got it.
Again, as you can see on the screen, we have highlighted the areas where we made modifications based on the feedback that you provided last month.
And one thing, board members, I'm going to ask you to do, I want you to take our goals, rank them from top to bottom, and then in each of the individual goals, I want you to rank those top to bottom. Turn that information into Holly. She'll pull it all together in a schedule and give it back to us in open meeting on Monday. You know, that way, we're, we're following all the rules, but I still think it's important for us to understand what we think of the individual goals. At a future point in time, I'm going to ask you all to go back and assign percentages, with no one goal having more than 50%, but we do have to start somewhere, and this is, as I mentioned with Luke, I always like to look at things a little bit differently, and this is just a different technique. So, back to goal number one, looking to the right, questions, comments? Very good, sir. Nadley?
I would say that with these being this year's goals, the understanding that I feel like this is, having brought in, I appreciate the respect of the new board members and being able to give us an opportunity to put input in, but I do feel like to the administration, it's quite challenging that you had some goals and things you were working on, and then to shift midstream, so I love your suggestion of the exercise of ranking, Tom, and I would look forward to this process as we anticipate into the next school year, really being able to work as a team of eight to hone in on the most critical things. And I feel like your ranking exercise will have a head start. Thank you.
Gilbert? Luke? Debbie?
No, sir. No questions.
Julie?
No questions.
So I think, so with no questions and no objections, I think we have consensus on goal number one and all the subcomponents. Let's move to goal number two. Questions? Let's start at, to my left, Luke? Thank you. Debbie?
No questions.
Thank you. Julie?
No questions. All the feedback was incorporated into the changes.
So to my right, Scott? Nadley?
What Julie said.
Okay. Gilbert? Gilbert? While we're here on goal number two, I just want to make certain that I understand the direction we're headed. I think I do, but I just need to ask. When I was in DC as part of National, I visited with trustees from across the nation. Everybody is seeing an increase in disciplinary challenges. Every trustee from a different state, didn't matter, big, small, medium size. Do we believe that the changes we have here address that? And then, secondly, where we look at our target of decreasing actions resulting in removal from class by 10%, are we certain that we're still addressing disciplinary needs and actions and giving classroom teachers the support and flexibility that they need? Yes?
Well, you know, we just heard that fabulous report about all of the support that we are providing for students and teachers in our schools. So, coupled with that, we looked at the 50% and heard your feedback and selected a 10% and maybe could look at decreasing that incrementally. But definitely not to say that our goal is not to make sure that we have safe and secure classrooms. So, if you look at that third objective, because you talked a lot about classroom behavior, concerns that teachers were having in the classroom, which may be different than school-wide behavior, what's going on in the halls. So, we've been working and will work with all of our teams to possibly adopt a classroom management program and do a pilot program with some feeder campuses so that we can look at elementary, middle, and high and see if having a more concentrated look on classroom management may decrease some of those behaviors. So, that's our plan. That's what we thought we heard. And then, on the fourth goal, we've talked about PBIS. And PBIS is a school-wide management program. And you mentioned given campuses choices. So, over 90% of our campuses are PBIS. Only three of them are not. But then, they would have a choice if they don't have buy-in from their teachers to select another research-based program. So, we were, we believe that based on your feedback, that these objectives, it's a great start.
Excellent. Thank you. And I know for myself, even if we see an increase in referrals, I'm not going to be perturbed. Two years of COVID are very challenging, and we have another year coming up. Goal number three. Let's start to the right. Scott? Natalie?
Yes, looks correct. And I'm very interested seeing number five. Thank you for your work on that.
Just quickly, we plan to provide the board with a report on our work on the development of our teacher incentive allotment plan at the next meeting in May, March.
Gilbert? I also will look to my left now. Luke?
I've reviewed it. I appreciate all the feedback and the wonderful work here. I have no comments or questions beyond that.
Thank you. Debbie?
Well, I see in goal number one about recruiting a diverse leadership staff. So, to me, when I hear leadership, I'm thinking of principal, assistant principal, counselors. But does that include teachers?
Yeah, absolutely, Debbie. The goal is to make sure that we, as I've stated before, make sure we're looking in all places for employees so that we get a diverse...
Okay. When I saw leadership, I thought maybe it just meant, like I said, the principal, assistant principal. I want to make sure we incorporate teachers into that. But, okay, I'm good.
The bottom line is, we're looking for the best. We're just going to make sure we look everywhere.
Right. I appreciate that.
We can definitely adjust that leadership and campus staff if you feel that that would be more inclusive.
I think it would, Deborah. I think it would read more inclusive to those that maybe don't watch school board meetings and maybe were assuming, like I was, what leadership means. So, I think that would be a good idea.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you.
So, do I see heads nodding? You got it. Thank you, Debbie. Julie?
This, goal number three, had four new objectives added. So, I just want to make sure that we do look at those, that it does reflect things we've talked about as well as the requirement now, the teacher incentive allotment plan. The objective number seven, to develop a plan to maintain a low teacher turnover rate, I think is very important. We're aware that there is a high rate of teachers leaving the profession due to the stress and strain of the last couple of years. And so, I think having that as an objective that we can measure and that we really focus on is very important. We want to make sure that our teachers feel appreciated, that they are fairly compensated, that we recognize their hard work, and that we keep them employed as our teachers because they're very important to us and they're really the foundation of what we do. So, I think that's important to put some focus and effort on that.
On number seven, and that's something I've talked about every year I've been on the board, I'm receiving very nice, positive feedback from teachers regarding the additional planning days without students that we have given to them. We did not talk about this in January when we approved our calendar, and that's my mistake. So, I wanted to remedy that by mentioning it tonight because we had a different opportunity because it's on the agenda. Certainly, if we wanted to look to that for the future, I would be supportive of that idea or if management has other ideas that that can help. We were the leader of the districts in doing that. And as soon as we did it, shortly thereafter, within a month or two, districts from around the state started following what we did. But very positive feedback on that. And definitely, number six, as Natalie and I have chatted, sometimes there is tremendous advantage having bilinguals. Very difficult to hire them. They're in short supply, particularly those that can pass the test. And I know, Linda, you have mentioned before that you have different ideas as to how we can approach this during the summertime in a different setting. But I'm glad that number six and seven have been added. And I appreciate the attentiveness of senior management. You know, we hit you all with the number of almost down-in-the-weeds specifics, and you were able to bring the ideas back up to a higher level. And that's appreciated. You know, it might be said that it's our job to give you the words at the higher level. But until we are trained up to do so, I certainly appreciate the help from y'all. Goal number four. Lucas?
So, I'm excited about the feedback for number two. I look forward to seeing how that's implemented. But I think it's wonderful that we've added that. So, thank you very much. I do not have any further questions about goal number four.
Debbie?
No questions.
Julie? Scott? Natalie?
To goal number two, I too appreciate the addition there. I feel like as we work together as a team of eight and we do governance training, the role of the board is to clarify those priorities in the community, identifying the community vision and values, and then adopt those as board goals and constraints. And so, I feel like as we morph between this plan and into the new plan into the next year, this, some of that comprehensive feedback and input from our stakeholders, from parents, from the community, teacher, students, staff, that is something that is actually the responsibility of the board. And so, seeing how we work with administration to make sure we're out listening, talking to our community, engaging with our community, and clarifying those so that we can be very focused. So, this spring, I feel like it's a little bit hybrid, maybe because as we really gain our traction about what's our part and how we then use that to support administration. I look forward to the process, and I appreciate that you guys are diving into doing something very detailed there. So, thank you for listening to the idea of getting input because the voices matter. And we appreciate you.
Gilbert? Let's move on to goal number five, financial management. And I would remind everybody that goal number five with financial management actually has two components, right? So, you have the technology component, and you'll see that in seven, eight, and nine. So, to my right, Scott? Natalie? Gilbert?
No questions.
Lucas?
No questions. Again, I appreciate the feedback, and I recognize what the work is here. So, that's wonderful. I'm looking forward to seeing the implementation of all the new components. That's great.
Julie? And so, if you would, remind us all what a data governance framework is.
This would allow us basically, I mean, because, you know, data's everywhere. So, this allows us to determine, you know, where the data is, who owns the data, who's responsible for maintaining it and reporting it. And it'll ultimately allow us to do things such as Mr. Scanlon mentioned, and I believe also Dr. Blasen game, about data dashboards and having like a data warehouse where we have all the data that can communicate with each other because we do have a lot of sources of information, and you've got to be able to pull that together. So, we really already had, prior to the talking to y'all last month, had begun working on this data governance committee.
And where do we have our cybersecurity concerns being addressed?
That is actually in goal, I think it's number five, I mean, objective five, I'm sorry. Let's see, on the expand the network security for students and staff.
Excellent. Thank you. And now to goal number six, operations management. There were no changes, no. Goal number six, operations management with no changes. But this is your second bite at the apple. So, Scott?
I want to take the opportunity to thank Dr. Henry, the administration, for the quality of the work and the thoughtfulness of the work and the patience with the amount of work, the added work. You guys are exemplary in everything you do, and you're exemplary in the way even just producing this product with a positive attitude and thoughtful measures. And so, we appreciate you.
Gilbert? Lucas?
I have no questions. I only have a comment on objective one for transportation. I just, I want to say for our transportation department, how much I appreciate you. I've got direct parent feedback. When is the school bus showing up? And I was like, guys, we've got it. There's a plan in place. Calm down. I understand, and they're working on it. So, I appreciate all you guys do.
Debbie? Julie? That concludes our review of all six goals. I want to thank the administration for taking the comments, putting them back into a framework and a document that we can move forth on. And board members, I want to thank you for taking the time to go through these. Whether you're brand-new or you have years of experience, these still take time to go through because this is not what we do on a day-to-day basis. But this is probably the most important document that we looked at all the evening. So, even though there were not tremendous numbers of questions, it does not mean that we did not review the material in depth. Next, we have... Now, we move to the consensus action items on the agenda. Nine period. Nine A, the board will consider approving the minutes of the January 13, 2022 regular board meeting. I presume we can keep that on the consent agenda, and we will. We'll now move to the non-consent items. Ten A, the board will consider nominations for the large district member vacant Region 4F position on the TASB Board of Directors. There were three colleagues who initially expressed interest. One dropped out, so there were two colleagues that expressed continuing interest, and I met with both of them. I would entertain a motion to elect one of our colleagues at this time.
So, I make a motion to elect one of our colleagues?
Yes, sir.
So, Dr. Natalie Blasen game?
Motion's been made. That is Monday for action. Thank you. You know, you get past nine o'clock, I have trouble reading the agenda. We'll move to ten B. The board will consider... So, that was a dry run. You know, that was practice. Ten B, the board will consider approving the budget amendments for the period of October 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021. Questions only. I'll look to my right. None. To the left? Debbie, Julie? So, Karen, on the, you have budget adjustments in there for ESR funds? Did we receive the approximate dollar amount of ESR funds that we thought?
Basically, what happens, Mr. Jackson, is we draw down the money as we utilize it. So, we haven't received all the money yet, but it's as we draw it down. But we will receive, you remember when I reported to y'all the dollar amounts of the different ESR funds? We've, they've all been allocated to us. The last we were waiting to have allocated to us was the remaining one-third of the ESR III funding, and that has been allocated, and we've amended our grant application.
I have received questions from legislators, but also legislative staff as to how are we using the ESR funds? And you've educated me enough that I can give a very rough answer. But at some point in time, not tonight, I think the entire board would like to know how we're using the ESR funds. And perhaps we can put together some type of communication with our elected officials.
Thank you. Yeah, we're planning to do that, and we'll actually probably do a report in one of the next board meetings.
Very good. Thank you. Okay to move that to consent? Yep. Yes? No? Ten C, the board will consider authorizing the superintendent to execute a new memorandum of understanding with Mercyhurst University for student-teacher placements for the 2021-2022 school year. I'm going to cover all of the remaining memorandums of understanding. At the same time, we'll take questions altogether. Ten D, the board... Ten D, the board will consider approving the memorandum of understanding for telehealth services referrals between RISE Recovery and Cypress Fairbanks ISD. Ten E, the board will consider approving the memorandum of understanding between University of Houston and Cypress Fairbanks ISD. Ten F, the board will consider approving the memorandum of understanding between participants in the AFJ ROTC Skill Bridge Internship Program and the Cypress Fairbanks ISD. So if our memorandums of understanding, any questions? Lucas? Debbie? Julie? Scott? Very good. Natalie?
I also submitted a couple of questions by email.
Gilbert? I do have a question already. Like most of my questions, already know the answer, but I kind of like this one. On ten F, what exactly is Skill Bridge, and how does that benefit the school district?
Mr. Jackson, think of the teacher, student-teacher programs. That's exactly what this is. It's a teacher-student program. It's, it's, it's for our airmen who are getting ready to retire from the Air Force and are looking to become instructors in the, in the JRROTC.
And do we have to pay these interns?
No, sir, we do not. We're hoping to be able to generate more instructors by being a part of this.
Excellent. Thank you. And so may we move all four memorandums to consent? We don't have to because y'all still have offline questions. So I'll start with you, Scott. Do you want to wait till your questions get answered or move it to consent? Consent. Natalie? OK. Gilbert? Lucas? Debbie? Julie? So that is moved to the consent agenda.
Consent?
Thank you, Debbie.
Yeah, and just for clarity, it's always going forward, we can move things to consent, and then if a question comes up, as Mr. Jackson will typically ask before the motion, just keep in mind, if we need to pull something, then we can.
And Holly, ten A is not on consent. We will take that up on Monday. We have already covered ten G and ten H. We have not discussed if ten G and ten H are consent. Board, you'll remember, we moved those to the front. Can we move those to the consent agenda? Looking to the right. No, ten G and ten H. These are our, our big construction contracts as well as supplies contracts. Debbie? I would presume yes. Julie? So those have been moved as well. So I think we've reached the last page. Wonderful. The superintendent's briefing portion of the agenda will be, will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday. We do have one other item. Is that set up for Monday, though?
I'm sorry, my microphone wasn't on. Yes, that's Monday.
Very good. So we have covered everything on the agenda. I'd like to hear a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
Made a second? Done! We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for staying, staff, as well as community members, patrons of the district.